One more second. Oh, yeah, the Venus. All right, welcome, everyone. I call the June 2nd, 2020 Bothell City Council Meeting to order. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to provide an update on the city's COVID-19 response and to take care of items which are routine and necessary and have deadlines related to them. So before we move on to the agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings was again extended until June 17th. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed, both in writing or verbally, and we will also take public comment verbally and written for the three public hearings. Sign-up sheets provided by the City Clerk's Office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. For our phoning callers during staff presentations, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provide advance notice are able to make comments under the Audience Comment portion of this meeting. So email was encouraged and what as well and will be acknowledged. So at this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position on the call. Please say here when the City Clerk calls your name.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Here.
Councilmember Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember McAuliffe. Councilmember McAuliffe, please unmute your mic.
Here.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Councilmember McNeil.
Here.
Councilmember Dorr. Councilmember Dorr.
I said.
Oh, she's here, but her mic was muted, okay? And Mayor, uh, Councilmember Agnew.
Here.
All right, we will also have several staff members and consultants who will be joining us at various times on the agenda for specific items. So lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. So for all the meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking, mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. For council members, at the appropriate times, I'll be calling on each member by position, number, or order, asking if you wish to speak or ask a question. I will also be doing this when it's time to vote. If you want to speak, please indicate by waving. This will help you avoid the problem of two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask the question, make a motion or second a motion, or participate in the debate. And remember, please mute your microphone when not speaking. So the first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Please note that tonight's agenda is final and only adjustments considered are consent items wishing to be polled for discussion or those items that are routine and necessary or COVID-19-related that are added with approval of the majority of the council present. If anyone wishes to pull an item, please indicate by waving. Seeing none, we'll move on. So I'd like to take a personal point of privilege. With the current events happening throughout the nation, we will be having a moment of silence as a council and ask everyone to join. This is a collective heartache, and we want to remember the recent victims whose lives were cruelly and unjustly ended by the ugliest of hate called racism. The pain is unspeakable for those who love them and for the and for the nation. We will not tolerate it as a people. As a city and community, we propose that Bothell grieves with them and will carry the standard of justice, justice, and brotherly kindness. Let us now remember. Thank you, everyone. All right. Chief Suberlich, I believe you wanted to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and City Council Members. I am Chief Ken Suberlich of the Bothell Police Department, and I would like to address the community and the council on the recent events. As stated in my letter to the community, we, the men and the women of the Bothell Police Department, are outraged at the death of Mr. Floyd at the hands of Minneapolis Police Officers, outraged that we, as a nation, must grieve another needless death. Law enforcement across this nation must do better. We are here to protect and serve, not to needlessly take another's life. Yesterday, activists in our community were able to appeal two large groups to mourn Mr. Floyd's death and to help enact change. One group stood on the 160th overpass over I-405 while another was at the intersection of State Route 527 and 522.
Chief, could you speak a little louder?
Oh, I'm sorry. Is this loud enough? Can you hear me now?
That's better.
Okay. I had the opportunity to be with activists at the State Route 522 interchange yesterday. I didn't go there to keep the peace. I went there to stand with them. I went there to let them know that law enforcement can and must do better. I went there in hopes of making change. I can't speak much about Minneapolis PD, Chicago PD, NYPD, or Baltimore PD. I don't know their culture, and I don't know their personnel, but I can speak about Bothell. I've worked here since 1994. We're a relatively small agency of roughly 68 commissioned officers at this time. I know each and every one of them. Many of them, I did their backgrounds when I was a sergeant assigned to professional standards. Our culture here is special. It's special because we take the time to hire the right people, people who want to do the job for the right reasons. We aren't just looking for a warm body to fill a uniform. We want empathetic, caring officers who want to make a difference, to make the community better, to ensure that those who have been victimized and marginalized have a professional law enforcement organization that they can turn to and trust. The mission of the Bothell Police Department is to protect life and property through professional police services and a proactive partnership with the community. This is the mission that we stand by and perform daily. Our department's core values are service, honesty, integrity, excellence, loyalty, and duty. We strive every day to set the example of these values. We are a human organization, and that means we are not perfect. But we strive every day to make the community proud by the quality of services provided. And with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions that anybody may have for me.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thanks, Chief. I appreciate your comment. Sorry, there's reverb. If I pause, that's why. I just wanted to ask, in terms of training, at any point in your training, are any of your officers trained to put their knee on the neck of someone that they're trying to arrest or get under control?
Absolutely not. What we saw in that video back in Minneapolis doesn't hear any training that I've ever been to in my 30 years of law enforcement. You know, I think that that was just a horrible choice on the part of the officer. He should have listened to the subject. We had plenty of officers standing by at that scene, going to stop that, and yet nobody did anything. That is not a tactic that any officer that I know has ever been taught.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Councilmember Agnew.
I don't have a question for you, Chief. I just want to thank you and the department for doing an excellent job. We should be very proud of the Bothell Police Department and the effort and the work that they do, and I couldn't be prouder of you guys right now.
Thank you very much, sir. We know that we're not perfect, and we try every day to make the community proud of us.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes, and I just want to say thank you so very much. I know many of your police officers. They're community members. They care about our community, and I know you too. So I just wanted to say thank you, and thank you to all of them.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I also want to say thank you for standing with my family yesterday. And when I say my family, I mean my family and my community. More than you know, it means you and I had an opportunity to speak briefly yesterday about my past. This is not about me. This is about our country and what we need to do to make it special for everyone. I just want to say thank you. There's a whole lot that I would I would love to say right now, but I'm struggling to get the words out. I'll say it for another time, but I just wanted to say thank you for standing with the community, and we do it loud and clear, and we support you and all your departments. So thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to clarify, when we are looking to hire officers, do we specifically screen for past membership in white supremacist organizations?
Yes, absolutely, we do. I'm very proud of our background investigations. We don't contract them out. We do them in-house. I used to do them here, and I trained the people that took my place. We do a deep dive, and we do a deep dive into people's core values and work ethic. We go back to, you know, I mean, I mean, grade school. So we go back a long ways. We we want to know the secondary references. We know you're going to tell us the people that we should talk to, but we want to find out the people that we need to talk to, the people you didn't list, the relatives that you didn't put down, the coworkers that you didn't list. That's when we get a better picture of the employees that we hired. And I will tell you that I've said this repeatedly, and it's a commitment I've had to keep in mind with you once here, is that we'll run short versus hiring the wrong people. When you hire the wrong people, you have things like this, Danny. You have people that are needlessly killed or injured. I tell the officers, don't do anything you're not willing to buy billboard space for, and you know, we hold them accountable, and we hold each other accountable.
All right, well, thank you very much, Chief, for you, your entire police force, for being part of a community, being part of our community, and just being, I think, just honest and very good communication with us at all times. I I'm just proud of our entire staff here, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm very proud to work in this organization and serve this great community.
All right, on to our reports. So we have a City Manager Jennifer Phillips with our COVID-19.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. I appreciate the police chief's comments as well, and I appreciate the council's support of our police department and our chief and our entire organization and our community as as we struggle together to grapple with what occurred over the last week, but also what changes that together we need to make to have a positive, bright future for all in our community and in our nation. And we're committed to being a part of that solution. I have an update for COVID-19. I've been doing that at each of the council meetings. So we had a challenging week this last week. Yesterday was the last day for 14 of our family members here in in the city of Bothell. So 14 people were laid off. As a reminder, those salary savings are important, not only for 2020, but those positions will also not be included in the 21-22 budget as we grapple with the multi-multi-million-dollar shortfalls in 2020 as well as 21 and 22. As a result of the negotiations, we did negotiate furloughs for the administrative employees, so all the nonrepresented employees and all of our ASPY employees, all of us have taken a 10% reduction in pay. And as a result of that, to accommodate the employees, the City Hall will be closed. Once City Hall opens, whenever we venture into Phase 3 and begin to open City Hall under the governor's orders, just an advance warning that City Hall will be closed every other Friday to accommodate those reductions in time and pay for all of the administrative employees. More information to come, but just giving the community a heads up and keeping everyone included in these conversations of the changes that will be happening. Our next steps now, as we start to move into Phase 1.5 and 1.2, whatever it's called, 1.5, and moving into Phase 2, is we are working on a recovery plan. And, you know, sometimes we're humble about all the work that goes on behind the scenes. It's often like I like to refer to a professional sports team or Olympians. You know, we sit and we watch the culmination of their efforts and see only the small glimmer of their hard work, and we don't have an understanding or a concept of the toil and struggles and hardships and efforts and commitment, passion that goes in to prepare people for some of these great things that they do in their lives. Sometimes in local government, we're also seen that way. Many times, the council and the community only sees a tip of of the work, the ultimate culmination of some work. So I thought a great example of the effort that's going into coming back and recovering from COVID-19 just for our organization to give you a sampling of what we're working on. So the planning section of the ECC, which continues to be active, we're in our third month of an active emergency communications center activation, is the planning section is working on our recovery. And recovery looks like this. We have a recovery unit, and within that recovery unit, and these are all employees, so committed to identifying how we safely bring our workforce back into our buildings, back into the community to make sure that our employees and our community are safe. So we have a recovery unit, and under that recovery unit are four groups: a cost recovery group, a departmental phased reentry plan group, a safety guidance and plans group, and then an implementation group. Then we have the documentation unit. Because we're government, we have to document everything in hopes of some reimbursement from either the CARES Act or FEMA. Then we have a situation status unit. That has two groups as well. It has an internal group to prepare our organization for reentry, and then an external group as we work with our community to make sure that they are coming along and the needs that they may have as we reenter our into Phase 1.5 and 2 and into 3. Then we have a mobilization and demobilization unit. We have the continuity of government plan group, and so we need to document how we merged, how we moved our entire organization into a telecommuting situation so that if and when this happens again, it's all documented and we're able to do it more smoothly. And then a demobilization plan group that then documents how we demobilized and brought everyone back into the workplace. And that is just to reopen City Hall. That's a small window of the volume of work that goes into just one decision, which is basically, how do we reopen City Hall? Hopefully, that gives you a glimmer of the amount of work that's going on as we as we respond to COVID and hopefully get our City Hall and our operations back to some sense of normalcy. That's my update this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions for the City Manager? Deputy Mayor Zornz. Can we hear your audio, or I saw you sent a comment.
Yeah. I don't know how specific things, but I just got a question from asking what position Jennifer did.
So in the chat box, City Manager, there's a question from Deputy Mayor. Someone, she wants to know, kind of, is there a big picture of the positions lost?
I don't I don't have those with me. I can try to recall them. So the recreation program coordinator, because we're having no recreation programs for 2020, and it's undetermined what 21-22 will look like, and with with the budget challenges, that was a position that we identified. Parks Planning and Grants Manager in the Parks Department, an Administrative Manager in the Public Works Department, a Traffic Technician. Thankfully, that person was able to go back to a former position in streets, so the position was eliminated, but not but the individual was able to not be laid off. A customer service desk position, a Senior Planning Inspector. Trying to go floor by floor. An Administrative Services Coordinator for both the Police, for both the Finance Department and the IS Department, we had a position, a shared position, so those responsibilities will go back to individuals within the department and to my executive assistant. And then in the Police Department, we had a lead customer, a lead dispatcher and a dispatcher position, as well as a Police Services Officer in the Police Department and a Court Clerk. And I believe that's 14.
All right. Any other questions for the City Manager? Check in the chat box also, just in case someone is video is cutting out. All right, I'm not seeing anything. Thank you very much. All right, on to our council committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report they'd like to share? All right. So on to visitor comments. So in keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 20-28 regarding public gatherings and open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comments in writing as well as accepted sign-up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meetings. So written comments submitted to the City Clerk no later than 3:00 PM today were forwarded to all the City Council members and are part of the record. So Clerk, can you give a quick synopsis?
We did. We received a number of written comments. Nobody signed up to actually call into the meeting, so I will just go through the list of written comments that we received. The first one is from Sarah Armitage, and she wrote regarding the lack of service and support from the unemployment office. The second one is from Cheryl Aspie of Bothell Chiropractic, who wrote regarding getting critical information to local businesses as soon as possible. Next, we had Kyle Emerson, who wrote in favor of open streets. Lee Henderson wrote, allowing all businesses to benefit from open streets. Bonnie Plotner wrote in favor of open streets. Sarah Gustafson wrote in favor of a pilot program for open streets. Tyson Kemper wrote in favor of open streets. Julie Westerback wrote in favor of open streets. Donna Bardley wrote in favor of open streets. Kevin Kiernan wrote in favor of open streets. Ayumi Shinjo wrote in favor of open streets. Koby Zephyrman wrote in favor of open streets. Logan Hamel wrote in favor of open streets. Chrissy Cates wrote in favor of open streets. Kate Franks wrote in favor of open streets. Carol LeBeck in favor of open streets. Jen and Nick Barber wrote in favor of open streets. Lisa Rathburn wrote not in favor of open streets. Troy Casper wrote regarding in favor of open streets. Rosa Wampler wrote not in favor of open streets. Sarah Jane Hamel in favor of open streets. Norelles Ortiz in favor of open streets. Laura Borner wrote in favor of open street and thanking the police officers for attending a local protest. Joe Schindler wrote in favor of open streets. Kelly Forbes Marshall in favor of open streets. Gouda Protasio Karazi, excuse my, if I butchered that, in favor of open streets. Jessica Campbell wrote in favor of open streets, and Stephanie Adam wrote in favor of open streets. That's it.
A lot of public comment this week. Thank you very much. Let's see, so on to the consent agenda. So Councilmember McAuliffe, those were just readings of the public comment.
No, I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry. When you say open streets, is that open Main Street or is it open other streets for walking? I'm not clear.
It was, I think those were just the public comments that were sent to all the council members. We have the agenda item for the discussion later on in the meeting. That will cover both topics, I believe, so.
I understand. I just wasn't clear from the, because we all received those messages. I wasn't clear whether open streets was just open, closed Main Street, open, I'm not clear what the comments were directed toward. So if you could kind of explain, is it open streets? What does that mean?
Let's say that until the agenda item that comes up, and then we can, you know, have a have that as part of this discussion on the the public comment, I would say.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, on to the consent agenda. So would like, would a council member, Councilmember Dewar?
I I move, we pass the consent agenda.
Councilmember Agnew.
I second that.
All right, great. The motion to pass the consent consent agenda as presented has been made by Councilmember Dewar and seconded by Councilmember Agnew. Would anyone like to discuss? Any discussion? All right, seeing none. City Clerk.
I will call your names and position order number. Please say yea or nay. Deputy Mayor Zornz. It looks like she's having some issues with her internet. Deputy Mayor Zornz, can you hear me? We'll try to go back to her. Councilmember Thompson, please say yea or nay.
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe, please say yea or nay. Councilmember McAuliffe, please say yea or nay to the motion.
Yea.
Mayor Olson, please say yea or nay.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil, please say yea or nay. Councilmember Dorr, please say yea or nay.
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew, please say yea or nay.
Yea.
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Zornz, can you hear me? Deputy Mayor Zornz, can you hear me? She she looks like she's having trouble, but the
She, she looks like she's having trouble, but the motion's passed.
We have the majority, so, all right.
Yep, we do. 6-0-1.
All right, the motion passes. All right, on to our next item, so Public Hearings. So AB 20-63, Public Hearing, uh, and Consideration of an Ordinance Amending the Bothell Municipal Code to Comply with Federal Emergency Management Administration Requirements for Special Flood Hazard Areas. So I'll open the public meeting and turn it over to Director Kaderman.
Thank you, Mayor. Very nice to see you this evening, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. It's nice to see all of you again. We actually have three public hearings this evening, and all of them have two things in common. They did not follow the regular process prior to coming to council for public hearing and actions, and they all have critical deadlines that have to be met. In two instances, these are external deadlines over which we have no control. So this means we have done the public notification required, but because of these deadlines, we were not able to do a digital public engagement in accordance with our usual standard, which is certainly more than the minimum. The staff will note the reasons for the critical deadlines in the presentations. In the interest of time, the presentations will be very brief, and staff will gladly go into more detail on any aspects where council has questions. So the first public hearing this evening is regarding amendments to the city's Critical Areas Regulations to comply with required updates from the Federal Emergency Management Administration, or FEMA. This action is necessary to ensure property owners will continue to be eligible for flood insurance. This was a multi-departmental effort involving staff from Public Works, the City Attorney's Office, and Community Development. Senior Planner Dave Boyd is presenting this evening, and Boyd Benson and Darcy Eyler will be available to assist with questions. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Boyd.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that I would like to share with you. Share with me for a second here. Okay, is that showing up on your screens now?
Not quite yet.
I'm sorry, I'm having a good hearing. Do you have it now?
I, not yet. Looks like it's trying.
So while that's coming up, I'll just echo that this is an item that we are required to do per FEMA guidance that we received in late 2019 and 2020. We, are you seeing the screen yet?
No, I think we just tried to change a setting here, so maybe if you try again.
Let me.
Oh. It's looking good. We can see your email.
Okay.
All right.
Better?
Yep. We're in business.
Okay, thank you for your patience there. So, uh, this item was, has actually been on the Planning Docket for a few years now, and we've been essentially waiting for updated FEMA guidance, which, as I said, came in, in, late in the year in 2019, and then they had their site visit here early in, in 2020. The 2020 Docket included two items related to the critical areas. These FEMA floodplain management guidelines, and also, um, uh, updates to reflect the recent Ecology Wetlands Rating System and, and Buffer Guidance. Because of the FEMA deadline to adopt the floodplain amendments by June 19th, we are moving forward with that and taking it directly to council, and we will be coming back with the wetlands and other related amendments later this year. So the proposed changes are some very minor mapping changes based on the updated FEMA data. And here on the screen, if you can see it, there are, we're showing, I'm showing the Snohomish County portion of Bothell that has the aerial photograph with the, uh, the floodplain data and floodway data shown in blue and, and crosshatch blue. And then, to the right, is the mapping from our, our current mapping based on our Interactive GIS Cobb Map, showing that those areas remain pretty much as, as they, as they are currently. There are also minor revisions and some reorganization of definitions and the regulations to emphasize these special flood hazard areas. And we've established a new special flood hazard area permit, which supplements other required permits. So if a project is doing grading work within a floodplain, they would clearly need to also get a grading permit. If they're building any sort of a structure, they'd need a building permit. If they're impacting critical areas, they would need a Critical Areas Alteration Permit. So with that, I haven't entertained any questions. I've got some additional images if, if, if any of the questions lead us to other parts of the city. There was a public comm, written public comment that was received, and you may have gotten it. I did do a courtesy notice to four members of the public who participated in this code amendment, or commented, and, or asked questions. And, uh, and I erroneously put the date of this meeting as July 2nd. I corrected that as soon as I learned of the error. And as far as I know, that's the only written public comment that we've gotten, other than the, uh, comment from the Muckleshoots Tribe Fisheries Specialist who, that is in your packet as Attachment 3. So if there is any other, we'll do that, and then move on to deliberations and a motion and vote to approve the recommended, recommended action as amended, if, if there are any amendments.
City Clerk, as he was mentioning, we did have the one.
Yeah, we just got the, the only one we received was from Ann Agard regarding what Dave Boyd said regarding the courtesy notice, just had inadvertently had the wrong date on it. It was not the illegal public notice that we had to publish. It was just a courtesy notice. So that was the only thing. She just wrote in to acknowledge that. Other than that, we did not receive any others.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Uh, any questions, comments? Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Glad to be back. I had huge difficulties here in Miami, but now you guys are clear and looking good.
Looking a lot better.
So I, so Dave, my apologies if you already co, uh, covered this. I, and I think we're on AB 6.
20-63.
Yes. I noticed that there's going to be a follow-up later on with the Planning Commission for P. Just have to be completed. Until then, will council get an update on what Plan Commission decides? Or comes up through, that they're going to be reviewing? That the Critical Areas Regulation Amendment is going to be reviewed this fall, evidently, late summer?
Yes, uh, Planning Commission will deliberate and make a recommendation to council on those code amendments. And so we do hope to have that back to council in the fall.
Okay, thank you. That was my question.
Any, anyone else? Councilmember Dewar? You're on mute. There you go.
So I am just looking, is, is this something that we need to approve tonight, or?
It needs to be in effect by June 19th, and, um, so, uh, and then it'll be published, and then there'll be a five-day period before it goes into effect. So as an, if, the, the plan was to adopt tonight, and it will be in effect on June 10th.
It's confusing because it says no action is requested at this time, so I wasn't sure if we needed to move it or not. Am I looking at the wrong, the wrong thing?
Yes, it says that, that is an error. We are expecting and requesting action tonight.
I move the recommended action.
Thank you.
All right. Do I have a second? Councilmember Agnew?
Second.
All right, great. So we have a motion by Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Agnew for the recommend, recommended action of approve the proposed ordinance amending sections of Bothell Municipal Code, Chapter 14.04, Critical Area Regulations pertaining to Flood Management. So is there any discussion? All right, seeing none. City Clerk, could you do the roll call?
I will. Please state yea or nay when I call your name and position order number, position number order, sorry. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Aye.
Councilmember Thompson? Councilmember Thompson, please state yea or nay to the motion.
I'm not seeing him.
Come back to him. Councilmember McAuliffe, please state yea or nay.
Yea.
Mayor Olson, please state yea or nay.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Councilmember Dorr?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson, are you back? Motion passes, majority.
All right, all right. We have the majority on that. All right, on to... Let me see where we are. So on to public hearing, AB 20-064. So we have the public hearing in consideration of an ordinance amending the Bothell Municipal Code to align with state exceptions for annual comprehensive plan amendments, and to clarify procedures for providing the State Environmental Policy Act documentation to advisory bodies. So I'll open this public hearing, and Director Kaderman?
Thank you, Mayor. You, you just took my speech, so I will just, uh, I will introduce Bruce Blackburn, who's been working on this, and, and he'll explain the importance of this, the timing of it, and, and why it's critical to the Canyon Park Subarea Plan Update that Bruce has been working on. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to him. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody, Mayor and Councilmember. This is Bruce Blackburn with the City of Bothell. The Director Kaderman is going to kindly put up my presentation for me. Uh, this is a code amendment revolving two items within our regulations. First of all is to address SEPA, which is State Environmental Policy Act, that is a state law, and a comp, a code amendment regarding the, um, uh, Bothell Municipal Code, SEPA regulations, and of course, plan amendments. Next slide, please. Tonight, of course, this is a public hearing. You're going to get a brief staff presentation. We'll take public testimony, if we have any. We'll have some council deliberations. And then we'd like you to have the recommended action, which is to adopt the proposed ordinance amending these two BMC chapters. Next slide, please. The amendment to BMC 1118060 adds one more exception to the once-a-year limitation on changing the conference of plan. Now, that's kind of quite a mouthful, so I, let me explain a little bit. Basically, what this does, this gives the council more flexibility regarding plan amendments. There are six provisions under the state regulations that allow us to amend our comp plan. Our regulations only now have five of those items. This allows the adoption of the 2019 Conference of Plan Amendments upon resolution of a SEPA appeal. In 2019, we had a bunch of Conference of Plan Amendments that went through. They were delayed because of a SEPA appeal. What this amendment would allow us to do is, as soon as that SEPA appeal is resolved, we will be able to act on those 2019 amendments in 2020. And this is an important factor for us. Next slide, please. The second amendment clarifies the type of SEPA, State Environmental Policy Act documentation, that will be provided for legislative and quasi-judicial actions. Those are two different types of activities that we do within the city. We believe that providing for this regulation will be, help us to have some better informed recommendations from the advisory bodies. Basically, the advisory bodies are going to get much more information than they have in the past. The other part, we think this will also improve public transparency. Again, the public will have more information than they have in the past. Finally, this will help us clarify the adoption process for the Canyon Park Sub area. That is a really important item. We're coming up on some work that we're going to be doing on that particular item. We want to make sure we have a very clear path regulatory-wise to adopt that process. Next slide, please. It's important for us to understand that these align with State Growth Management Act and Environmental Policy Act rules. And essentially, what this does is this gives you the ability to act on the prior year's docket item. If it was considered during the prior year, you can do that this year. It also better aligns with SEPA, and it primarily affects the integration of the SEPA process at the earliest possible time. That is a really important key fundamental of the environmental process. Next slide, please. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Lots of information in a, in a small package here. So this allows to look back at previous, um, plans that we've made and allow them to move forward. Is that, does that just apply for Canyon Park? It, it applies for everything, isn't it, down the road?
As a matter of fact, that's a good point. It does apply to everything. So for our situation, last year, we had the Minimum Density Plan Code Amendments that were put on hold while we negotiated the SEPA process, uh, SEPA appeal. That process, and by having this regulation, will allow us for the council to take that item up immediately upon resolution of that SEPA appeal. So it's really important that we have this ability to do this.
I don't know if I get to say anything later on, but I know our days are numbered in thanking you for presentations, so thank you for this one.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we'll all have to enjoy all the Blackburn time we can get.
Well, it's on to an end, but I still.
All right, any other questions or comments? City Clerk, did we have any, we didn't have any public comment?
We did not.
All right. Councilmember Dewar?
I move the recommended action.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Second.
All right, we have Councilmember Dewar with the motion, Deputy Mayor Zornz with the second of the recommended action is to, that the council... that the council adopt the attached ordinance amending BMC 11.18.060 and 14.02.220. Any discussion? All right, seeing none. City Clerk, will you do roll call vote?
Deputy Mayor Zornz, please say yea or nay.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yea.
Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Councilmember Door?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. All right, on to AB 20 dash 065. The Public Hearing on Retaining Interim Ordinance, Temporarily Suspending Development, Application, and Permit Timelines. Director Kaderman, I'll, I'll keep it brief this time and let it go over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Now if I can get the right screen to come up. That did not work. Are you seeing?
We're seeing your PowerPoint. Yep.
Okay, good. For some reason, it's coming up different on my screen, so let me get that started. So this is, um, this is a somewhat unique public hearing in that the council has already taken action. And this was a action the council took back in April of this year, April 7th, in response to the COVID pandemic and the potential halt in construction of several projects that were going on in the city. So there was a lot of uncertainty at the time about how long that might last, when it might restart, and what effect that could have on applications and permits that might expire during the time that we were all trying to sort out exactly how this was, how this was going to work through the, through the pandemic. So at that time, the council adopted an interim ordinance, which has an effective period of six months. Uh, and the purpose of that was to, um, suspend timelines for things like application, response to staff comments, paying fees and picking up the permits, or the expiration of the permit itself. And we did a quick estimation of how many that's affected so far. Uh, and it, it's a little over 350 permits that we think would have expired between January 1st of this year, because we made it retroactive, and, um, and June 1st. So that's 361 permits that did not have to apply for an extension, and that we didn't have to process in the midst of everything else. Our best estimate is for about over 600 through the six month period for the ones that we know about. That does not include the, the ones where we're waiting for them to respond to staff comments, for example. Those are just the permits themselves. So this has had the desired effect. The vast majority of those are relatively small type of permits. They're mechanical or plumbing permits, small building permits, those types of things. But, um, but it's been, it's, it's been a valuable tool for us to have available and to save a lot of, a lot of time and expense for applicants. So as I mentioned, the ordinance was adopted on April 7th. It is effective for six months or through October 7th, and applies to any permits or applications submitted as of January 1st of this year. Uh, the public hearing, since we did it as an interim ordinance, it was adopted without a public hearing. So the state law requires that we hold a public hearing within 60 days of adoption. So we are getting close to the end of that 60 day period, and that's the purpose of the public hearing this evening. The council can repeal this at any time, and it's just a simple motion and an affirmative vote. So if we can let it expire at the end of the six months, or the council can, can repeal it before that if, if it's deemed no longer necessary at that time. It can also be extended if for some reason we, there's a need to extend it, and that would require an additional public hearing by council for an extension of another six months. So for this evening, if you have any questions about the ordinance itself or the purpose of the public hearing, I'm happy to answer that. Darcy Ilers is also here to help answer those questions, conduct the public hearing if there's any discussion. Uh, and this is the item, I think, that Councilmember Dewar referenced earlier. This is one where if you want to retain the interim ordinance, which is what the staff is recommending, then no action is required. The ordinance will simply continue as it is now. Uh, the only action you would need to take is if you want to repeal the ordinance this evening. Otherwise, it's just a matter of conducting the public hearing and then giving direction to staff as to whether or not you want to continue the, continue the ordinance. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Dewar?
Thank you, Director Kaderman. Um, this seems really, um, like a great idea. I'm, I'm curious, does the, um, so you said it's about 350 permits. But I assume that as time goes by, it will be, it will kind of encompass additional permits that are impacted? Or am I misunderstanding, um, how this works?
No, that's, you're correct. Um, that's the other number. Just the ones that we know about right now that are active that could expire before that six month period. If it goes the entire six months, it'd be over 600 permits. That's just our rough estimate. That does not include other things that might lapse, for example, for a lack of response on an application that's already been submitted. Those are just permits that are issued or would be issued between now and, and the end of that six month period.
Okay. Well, I think this is great public service. I think it makes a lot of sense. And I, I feel like it's showing our responsiveness to the need of the, the development community. So I really appreciate, appreciate staff having brought this to us. Um, I think it's really good policy. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Just a, a quick busybody question, because 300 possibly going to 600 just seems like, um, a mammoth backlog for you, you all. Are you, how, how are you all feeling about it? Are you feeling overwhelmed with those numbers? Or are you feeling like doing this gives you some squishing room and breathing room?
This, excuse me, this actually is beneficial for the applicants and for staff. Pardon me. Uh, because if, if their permits are expiring and they're requesting an extension, that's something else that staff has to process. So that, that saves us some time as well. So these are things that we're just letting them continue on for the time being. And when we figure out, once we get back into our regular rhythm of things at City Hall, we may not need to, to continue this at that point, and we could come back to council then.
So it sounds like what we're doing is we're giving grace to people in a difficult situation and also cutting out busy work that would just slow and bog, bog things down on your end. That's the impression I get from that.
That's a, a very good summation of it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else with questions or comments? All right, yeah, this, this one seems like a, a no brainer. We don't want to impede or just put up procedural roadblocks for people that are having challenges during this time and slowing down, you know, their good effort, good faith efforts to continue their projects during this challenging time. So, um, I say that we take no action and we just let it continue on its six month course. So Director Kaderman, so we don't need to do a vote or any motion on this. We just need the...
That's correct.
No, no objections, basically.
That's correct.
All right, well, I am, I'm not hearing any objections or any other comments or questions on this matter.
Mayor Olson?
Well, thank you very much.
Um, just, just for the record, we did not receive any public comment on this either.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so that will wrap up that item and that public hearing. So on to AB 20 dash 066, Consideration of an Ordinance Initiating Condemnation of Property Needed for the North Creek Trail Section 4 Project. So it looks like, uh, Public Works Director Leonhart?
Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and Council. Erin Leonhart, Public Works Director. I am hoping to introduce Dutcha Muthia. She is a capable project engineer for this project to introduce the subject of an ordinance initiating condemnation of property for our North Creek Trail 4 Project. Um, and I don't know if Dutcha is calling user three. Um, I don't see her otherwise.
It's kind of quiet.
It's kind of quiet. Okay, so we have a, a, a project, a North Creek Trail project. Have been pursuing various lengths of that. Right now, we're in the right of way acquisition phase for North Creek Trail 4, which is up by Centennial Park, um, off of State Route 524 along that area. And the right of way agent has been working with, um, property owners to acquire their property. Staff is asking council to consider an ordinance for condemnation. Not only does it help us keep our schedule for the project, but it also provides an opportunity for, uh, property owners who do provide their right of way to the city. Under the threat of condemnation, it provides them with a, a tax benefit. I can, I can try to answer any questions you may have, and, uh, City Attorney Byrne can also help with, uh, with the legal aspects.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Agnew?
How many properties are we talking about?
Stand, stand by, please.
This is, uh, this is City Attorney Byrne. My recollection is that there were eight properties. We're not taking, um, a huge portion of any property. We're taking simple slivers. We, my understanding is also, we have also successfully negotiated with one property owner as, at this time, and we're continuing to negotiate with the other seven. The, this action is brought forward, basically, as Director Leonhart said, to provide them a benefit. And it kind of, um, gives, puts, because we know this is necessary for public use to complete the trail, we're asking that you pass this condemnation ordinance so that if we are unsuccessful in negotiating, we then don't have to return to council and we can simply proceed with a formal condemnation action.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember McAuliffe?
Are discussing with you, or are they all pretty supportive?
Uh, this is part of your question, uh, Councilmember. Were you asking if the property owners have been supported?
Yes.
And now I've been joined by Capital Projects Supervisor Ryan Roberts, who can answer that question probably better than I can. Ryan, are you aware of the, how it's going?
Yes, thank you. My understanding is the status is that we're currently going through the negotiation status with the property owners. We've contacted them and, and we're working with them to acquire the property that's used for the project. So how that's going is, you know, it's it's hard to say, but it's like any other negotiation, and eventually, um, it'll come to fruition at some point in time. It seems like it's been going well.
And if I could jump in, I also don't recommend that we discuss too much about the status of negotiations, because this does have the potential for litigation in the future if, if reasonable communications break down. So I, I think it suffices to say that we are active, we are in contact with each of the property owners, and we are in the process of trying to acquire their property with consent and, and compensate them in a way that, um, makes them satisfied with the process.
All right, who was next here? Any other? Councilmember Dewar?
Thank you, Mayor. I move the recommended action.
Councilmember Agnew?
Oh, second.
All right, so we have a motion from Councilmember Dewar, a second by Councilmember Agnew to unapprove an ordinance initiating condemnation of property for the North Creek Trail Section 4 Project and authorize the city manager to acquire the necessary right of way for the project subject to future council approval of deeds and easements documenting the acquisitions. Any discussion on the topic? All right, seeing none. City Clerk?
Please state yea or nay when I call your name and position number order. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yea.
Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Councilmember Door?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Director Leonhart. On to AB 20 dash 067, Consideration of Resolution Temporarily Suspending the Capital Facilities Plan Update Process and Adopting an Abbreviated Process That Satisfies the Requirement of the Growth Management Act. So Director Bothwell?
Hello. I'm going to share a PowerPoint with you. Okay. So with this item, we're asking the council to consider making few temporary changes to the CFP update process in response to conditions caused by the pandemic. Uh, I'm going to start with some background. The capital facility plan of CFP is the document that the city uses to plan the capital project. Bothell's CFP covers a seven year period. Cities that plan under the State Growth Management Act are required to create a CFP and to keep the plan updated. The current adopted CFP covers the years 2019 through 2025. And Bothell is due for an update of its CFP this year. The updated CFP will cover the years 2021 through 2027. The first three years of the updated CFP will be included in the 21, 22 budget. In, in 2006, the Bothell City Council adopted a resolution that prescribes a detailed CFP update process. The following is the description of the process and housekeeping matters addressed in the resolution. First, the resolution describes projects eligible, eligible for inclusion in the CFP, most notably the projects that have a value greater than $50,000. Second, it lists the funding sources available for funding CFP projects. Next, it directs staff to assemble a CFP committee that includes representation from the community, elected officials, and staff. Then it identifies several sources for new projects, which includes studies and plans, and directs the CFP committee to make a call for new project ideas. And finally, it describes the criteria to be used by the CFP committee to evaluate project proposals. So the process prescribed by the resolution has two major problems in the current social and economic environment. First, in-person gatherings that people are currently prohibited and are likely to be discouraged during the term of the CFP committee. While we may be able to gather virtually, the second issue is more difficult to mitigate. The revenue losses resulting from the pandemic and the recession are immediate, significant. Preliminary revenue forecasts suggest that the city will have considerable difficulty funding projects that are currently underway and those scheduled to begin in the next biennium. So due to the difficulties associated with gathering a committee and the expected difficulty funding new projects, staff is recommending a temporary suspension of the assembly of a CFP committee and the call for new projects. The abbreviated process would effectively be a recalibration of projects and resources for the seven year period. The recommendation maintains all other aspects of the CFP update process. Uh, it should also be noted- It should also be noted that staff recognizes the tremendous value that the community brings to the CFP update process. We also recognize that we ask people to come, from the community, to come participate in efforts like this. We're asking them to take time away from their families and regular life to participate. We want to ensure that time is productive. It is expected that the entire process prescribed by the resolution would be resumed for the next update that would occur in about two years. That's the end of the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Councilmember Dewar.
Thank you, Director Bothwell. I, I thought about this a lot. And I'm struggling actually over it. Because while I understand the difficulties in assembly and taking confidence, two years is a long time. And I feel like, given the current situation, our priorities might change. And we might want to revisit some of the things that are on that list because we know we can't fund them. And yet, there may be other things that become a higher priority and maybe cost less. And I'm also concerned, I believe King County passed a parks levy last November. And that provides money to Boffel. And I'm not sure that we've accounted for that in a project list. So I'm wondering if you can answer that question if you know, just to correct me. I'm sorry, I should have probably thought of it earlier and emailed you so you wouldn't have to guess on the fly.
So one of the parts of the current process that would not be suspended is we'd be relying on all the studies and things that the city has done where we've gathered stakeholder input. So the Pro's Plan would probably be useful in identifying if we have a new funding source that's going to fund parks-type projects. We would go to the Pro's Plan to identify what the community said there. So they would have, certainly there would be input from the community in the projects that would potentially make the cut for a new funding source. And that would be true. I mean, I think your point is well-taken. I think that, you know, priorities change and stuff. But there's a lot of activity where we've gathered stakeholder input on a lot of the projects in the CFP and things, and community priorities and those types of things. And those would all be layered into the process to, as a part of this recalibration. And many of those things are in the established criteria that we would be evaluating potential projects against when we're trying to align them with funding. But there's tremendous pressure on the funding sources that are available for CFP projects. And that's a primary driver of this is that we're going to be, we're going to have to get really crafty to keep everything moving forward. So to the extent that there's new funding sources like you described, we would be looking for, you know, studies and things to help us understand what the community would desire in terms of where those dollars should go.
Yeah, because I'm thinking of, you know, there's been some talk, and I don't want to steal Councilmember Thompson's thunder, but, you know, mountain bike trails. I don't know that mountain bike trails are on for rain or on the CFP. But those potentially, we could use volunteers to build. That would be something that we could do without a lot of money. And I, you know, I was in the CFP committee last time. And while I was only a small piece of the overall process, we met for, I think, less, I mean, it was like an hour or two max. And so I guess I'm really struggling. Do we have to abbreviate it by actually not doing it at all? I have no, I have no input. So I'm, I'm really, as I said, I'm really struggling.
Councilmember Thompson.
I had a question, Director Bothwell. Hi. I had a question. This says that the recommended action is to adopt an abbreviated process. I'm not entirely clear on what process that is. Like, what is the abbreviation? Like, what does new process look like?
Yeah, so with the new process, we'd just be a carryforward of everything that's contained in Resolution 1183 from two thousand and six, minus those two pieces that I described. So that the call for new projects and the assembly of the CFP committee, where we're reaching out to the community to staff it, or to be members of that committee. So effectively, like, as a process, what we would do is we would figure out what our resources are, do our best guess, and where we think things like real estate type projects is probably our biggest matching in funding source for a CFP project. So we're in the process of, well, we forecasted those already, but it's kind of a moving target. More data, better data is coming in every day. So what we're going to try to do is line the, line projects up with available funding. And what we have right now, you know, our first cut at this is that there isn't enough money to fund everything that's currently going on. So we're really going to have to get creative and think about how we can keep these projects moving. So, and then we have projects that are scheduled to start. The CFP is, you know, it's a very ambitious document, right? So in the next biennium, we have a lot of projects that are, or several projects that are scheduled to start. And we have to figure out how we're going to fund those with these kind of diminishing revenue sources. And so that's, that's a challenge. So what we're proposing is that we would use the criteria that's in Resolution 1183 and start to establish, you know, what we can actually fund and use that criteria to evaluate projects and schedule them based on availability of funding and the, and the criteria in 1183.
So in terms of like the mechanics of what this would look like with those six, this would be done completely at the staff level with no input from council or the public?
Well, council has to adopt the CFP. So we would come to council and we could, you know, we could come, we could have, I mean, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but we could have as many touches with council as you want. We could do work sessions, we could do council meetings, and solicit input from the council that way. But the challenge that we're going to have is funding everything that's either already underway or is scheduled to start in the very near term that we've already done a bunch of work on. And so my best guess at this point, and it's an educated guess, would be that there aren't going to be a ton of decisions to be made. It's just, it's really going to be about how do we fund the things that are already going on in light of these significantly reduced revenues.
Thank you.
So if I could, I just want to make sure that that's clear. There is a budget process. And the council absolutely will be presented this document, will go through it with you. And you are the ultimate decision makers. And the community is always invited and welcome as part of that process. So this is just one step in the process that we're recommending that be suspended for this year, which is the committee, and, but there'll still be a full community process. They're always invited to the, to the budget preparation, the workshop that's coming up at the end of June. And then anytime we meet with council with regards to the budget, those are all public meetings.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. And when I said I raised my hand there, the city manager did answer the majority of my questions. I had a question for the community. Can you tell me what the difference is between the capital facilities plan and the Pro's Plan?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that was a question for me? Okay. The Pro's Plan is just, it's a narrowly focused plan that has a lot of community engagement. It doesn't necessarily have a direct tie-in to the budget the way the CFP does. So it's a number of kind of advisory documents that we would look at in terms of the CFP and getting projects funded in the CFP. So it's just one of, it's an opportunity for the community and staff to figure out what parks are going to look like into the future. But it's narrowly focused on parks, raccoon compensation, trails, and, oh. The Pro's stuff. And so the CFP includes everything, including transportation projects and everything, facilities projects. Everything in capital that's over fifty thousand dollars is included in the CFP. So the Pro's Plan just has a much more narrow focus. And it also doesn't have a direct tie. And it has to work its way through the CFP process to get funded and budgeted. It's so, it's a document that's important to the process to make sure that parks projects are represented in the CFP and that they get funded in the budget. But it doesn't have a direct link to those documents, to those documents. Is that, can I answer your question?
Yeah, that's perfect. And do either of those two documents have a relationship to Growth Management Act?
I didn't get the last couple of words there. Relationship to what?
The Growth Management Act.
Yeah, I believe a Pro's Plan is required by the Growth Management Act. And the CFP is definitely required by the Growth Management Act.
Okay. And then, so while we're suspended, temporarily suspending, I think the word is temporarily suspending the capital facilities plan, we will still go through, I think the city manager said, the same process. We're just temporarily suspending it. Is that correct? So it won't be, we won't be diminishing what we've done in the past. We will just be temporarily suspending.
That's correct. We were just, we're going to realign all the documents we already have with available funding. We'll populate the last two years. So our current plan goes through 2025. And we've got enough projects in the pipeline that are in the adopted CFP that we're going to have difficulty funding. Those will get pushed out into the next couple of years. And potentially some new projects in the Pro's Plan, those kinds of things, they also land there. But yeah, you're right. We're not undoing anything. It's really just an effort to recalibrate and be realistic about the amount of money that we have to spend in the next biennium.
Fabulous. And then if any resources for additional funding did come available, would we have an opportunity to look at those at that time?
Absolutely, you can amend. So if there's a new program at the state level or something we want to take advantage of, and we have a project that maybe is shown in out-years or isn't on the current CFP, you can always amend the CFP anytime you want. And so if, you know, if this thing, if there really isn't a renovation six months long and we bounce back and wheat comes back and our projections were way off, we'll go in and kind of revive the process. And we can amend the CFP at that time. I don't think that's a realistic expectation. But if that were to happen, we absolutely could be responsive to it.
Fabulous, thank you so much.
All right, seeing no further questions. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I'm feeling like a stepchild here. I'm at the computer. I want to make sure, I'm sure I'm understanding you correctly. There are plenty of projects in the, in the pipeline that we have council and community agreement on to keep us busy for a while.
Yes, and we have a number of studies like the Pro's Plan that we'll be relying on that, that help us prioritize what's there.
Okay. And I'm just sitting here, you're talking about reconvening this in 2022?
Right.
Okay. And so I'm sitting here doing the math, and the math, I'm thinking, well, it's a year and a half. And if the economy is still difficult and putting people, and meeting people together in tight groups is still difficult for another nine to twelve, nine months, we're almost at 2022. So I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Just to think out loud here, say we were to have a bridge collapse or all of a sudden, you know, a bunch of new cracks, we'd need a capital facilities plan to say we need to go to Olympian Lobby for a new bridge postache, right?
Not necessarily. There's a number of funding sources that would like to see that your project is on your adopted CFP. But we can amend it. If we end up in a situation like that, we would absolutely bring an amendment to council and get those things on there. Because if, you know, if something like a bridge were to collapse, we're going to have to go in and do another recalibration of the CFP. Because we budget this thing to spend all the resources that are there. Because, I mean, we're going to, because we have so many projects that we need to finish or that the community desires. So we're not going to, we're not going to be sitting on a big pile of money. So if something, or if an emergency were to happen, we may have to go in and recalibrate the CFP anyway. But we would absolutely amend it in a situation like that. If there was a big, I think I may be repeating myself, but if there was a big funding source, a big new grant program that required we had something, needed a project on the CFP to be eligible for it, we'd absolutely go in and amend it for that type of thing, too. So this isn't like, this isn't like now, if we make this decision now or if you adopt, you know, an update where we didn't. Once you adopt your update, it's not, it's not chiseled into stone. We can always go back and make changes to it anyway, so.
Okay. Well, my gut on this is that this is a wise move and it's a responsible, responsible way to use our resources and schedule what kind of things we want to shoulder. And we don't need to shoulder this right now. I think this is a smart move.
All right, I'll echo the deputy mayor's thoughts on that. I think we just have some needs to figure out really what our budget is looking like. And as, as has been said, we definitely have lots of projects. We're not at a surplus of budget looking to spend on new projects. So I, I'm in favor of the recommended action. And Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Councilmember McNeil, yes, I would like to move the recommended action to approve the resolution temporarily suspending the capital facilities plan update process and adopting an abbreviated process that satisfies the requirements of the Growth Management Act.
Councilmember Agnew.
You have a second, yeah.
All right, so we have the motion by Councilmember McNeil with the second by Councilmember Agnew. Is there any discussion? Councilmember McNeil, speak to your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Ah, yes, I'd like to speak with motion. I'd just like to thank the city for taking a proactive approach on this during the pandemic. And I look forward to getting back to hopefully what we can consider somewhat of a normal process and having some of these projects come forward for the benefit of our community.
All right, seeing no further discussion. City Clerk.
I will call your name in position number order. Please state yea or nay. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe. Councilmember McAuliffe. Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Councilmember Dour.
Uh, yea.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Motion passes six zero one with Rosemary McAuliffe out of the room.
All right, thank you, everyone. On to, and thank you, Director Bothwell. All right, on to AB twenty dash zero six eight, consideration of inter-local agreement for a North King County mobile integrated healthcare program. And it looks like we have Chief Kuhn.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. So before you tonight, we have a new ILA that is essentially replacing an existing one through the King County EMS system. So the money in this, the sixty-nine thousand dollars plus is from King County EMS funds. So there's no cost, direct cost to the city. This is a program, started a couple of years ago, ran for two years. It's a community medical technical program, highly successful. It used two EMTs on an aid car or a vehicle to go out and see some low-acuity, but often the high-volume users, people that we could go out and immediately help. We couldn't address their underlying social issues that often were part of the problem. And this is, in many respects, similar to the police navigator program, but it's designed for EMS. So we go out and see people that we see, like I say, often, quite often, and get them help, and get them, get them out of the system, get them the help they need. So, because they don't, they don't need our help necessarily. I mean, they do, but it's, it's an ongoing thing. So it's a great program. The new program, the MIH, the Mobile Integrated Healthcare, they took the concept of the CMT, but they, now we're going to use one EMT and one social worker on the rig to go out. And by doing this, they've, they can save some money. So it's a little bit cheaper, still does really good things for the, for the area. And part of the bonus from this is the money they're saving from having the social worker. They can actually hire a part-time, a second social worker to do even more work in the office. So this is, the program's available mostly Monday through Friday. It's kind of a day-type thing. And they've got the people hired on for it. I believe, I want to see, the last I saw of the CMT program, and this again will be very similar. It's a program between Shoreline, North Shore, Boffel, Woodinville. We combine our EMS funds, levy funds to put this program on. Shoreline used a majority of the program's funding or help from these folks, primarily because Shoreline's much, much bigger and they have, I'll say that, a little more propensity for that kind of clientele and a lot of Shoreline are raw. more propensity for that kind of clientele and a lot of Shoreline are raw and whatnot, so that they drove a lot of this, but Bothell was the second biggest user of this program, so it's referred to by our folks, they see an issue that they say, hey, this person might need some help, they call, um, MIH, and then they get involved and go follow up, um, on a little acuity stuff, so a great program, doing good things, and this is a high priority for King County EMS in this new levy cycle, so we were selected to continue the program on, uh, if I can answer any other questions, I'd love to.
Question, deputy mayor Zorins.
Just, um, just very hard to me, uh, news to hear, um, as a way to interface with the community in a very meaningful way, so thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, and it's actually, it's a, it's a benefit for our folks too, because they get very frustrated as well, and they go out and they see people, but they know need more help than we can give them, we're only set up to do, you know, emergency or, you know, stop an issue that's going on right now, but they, they can tell these folks need some more help, and this is a great way for them, so it, it, uh, it stops people from being, like I say, repeat, uh, callers as much, it helps to stop that and gets them the help they need, so everybody, everybody's a winner on this thing.
Right, right, uh, uh, yeah, no, and it's immediate and right there and available.
Yep.
Instead of putting it off on a back burner for later, so thank you.
Council member Agnew.
Yeah, thanks chief for the presentation, I highly support the MIH program, I think to see, uh, the MIH program that was initially started, uh, at Shoreline, uh, did a very good job, and I think, uh, this is going to just expand on that, uh, I, I, I can see us doing really good work in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the chief? All right, chief, this seems like a, a great program, you know, seems very worthwhile, um, and I like your analogy to the navigator, and we know how, uh, popular and successful that has been, so, thank you, um, so I'm looking for a recommended action or a, a motion, council member Dour.
Thank you, chief, for the presentation, I move recommended action.
Council member Agnew.
I definitely second it.
All right, great, so we have a motion by council member Dour, a second by council member Agnew, uh, to authorize the city manager to execute in an interlocal agreement for a mobile integrated healthcare program with the city of Bothell, North Shore Fire Department, Woodinville Fire and Rescue, and the Shoreline Fire Department in substantially the same form as presented, any discussion? All right, seeing none, city clerk.
Please state yea or neg when I call your name, deputy mayor Zorins.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe. Councilmember McAuliffe. Mayor Olson.
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yea.
Councilmember Dour.
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Motion passes six zero with council member McAuliffe out of the room.
All right, thank you very much, everyone, thank you, chief, great seeing you tonight. All right, on to AB twenty dash zero six nine, consideration of dedicating state shared cares act funding to the city for COVID-19 related expenses and to the community for COVID-19 related assistance.
Good evening, Mayor.
Oh, yep, there's Assistant City Manager Kelly Mizoli.
Sorry for jumping in there, I wanted to make sure you could hear me, can you see me?
Yep, see and hear you, great.
Wonderful, okay, if you can leave just a second, I'll share my presentation. Okay, can everybody see the presentation okay? Excellent, okay, all right, good evening, Mayor and Council, Kelly Mizoli, Assistant City Manager, uh, this evening I'll be presenting and requesting direction, um, from you on the distribution of Bothell's allotted cares act funding. This evening I will, uh, share with you an overview of, um, I will cover, uh, a brief introduction on the cares act and specifically the state allocation being shared with the city of Bothell, you know, review the guidance that we've been given on how we can spend the funding, touching upon the different categories, the five-step, five-question eligibility test for each expense, and the deadlines placed on spending the funds, I will provide an introduction to the cost recovery team that you heard city manager Phillips, uh, mentioned earlier in her remarks, and this is the mechanism that staff is using to interpret that guidance, and ultimately to ensure that the city receives full reimbursement. Finally, I want council to provide some direction on portioning the funds to broad categories, giving staff the ability to quickly and effectively begin distributing these funds to the health of the community. The CARES Act is federal legislation that was signed into law on Friday, March twenty seventh, twenty twenty, the coronavirus aid relief and economic security act provided $2 trillion in funding aimed at addressing the impacts of the coronavirus, um, pandemic across the United States, $454 billion of that $2 trillion went towards an economic stabilization fund, which in part provides the loans and loan guarantees to small businesses that we've been hearing about, uh, the $150 billion, um, that we are able to access went to COVID-19 relief funds, which provided direct aid to states, um, tribal governments and local governments, um, as well as territories with populations specifically over 500,000, so the eighteen county, the city of Seattle, all qualified for direct funding, and while the city of Bothell doesn't meet those 500,000 in population threshold, uh, we are receiving a portion as a pass-through grant from the state of Washington, um, and that's being administered by the Washington Department of Commerce, so based upon a formula of about $30 per capita, uh, the city can be reimbursed for costs incurred up to $1,400,2,500. So while the city is receiving these state shared funds through the Department of Commerce, um, they are still subject to the Federal Department of Treasury guidelines, and that's in addition to those put out by the Department of Commerce, generally an expense that qualifies that is a necessary expenditure due to the public health emergency resulting from COVID. This is for the reimbursement, so reimbursement only, and for qualifying expenses, uh, between the dates of March first and October thirty first of this year. The expenses cannot be submitted, they were accounted for in our most recently approved budget as of March twenty seventh, and specifically expenses do not qualify if they are to fill a shortfall in government revenue, so we can be reimbursed for expenses that were incurred in order to, uh, facilitate, uh, compliance with COVID-19 measures, uh, such as food access for residents to qualify and small business assistance related to business interruption. Sorry about that, ah, am I not seeing this go, I need it to. So I'll talk a little bit about the expense eligibility test, um, in order to help us determine eligible expenses, the Department of Commerce shares a five-step test, uh, which each expense must pass, so this means that we have to be able to answer true to all five of these statements for an expense to actually qualify for reimbursement, uh, you'll notice that there's some terminology highlighted here, such as necessary and substantially different, these must be, uh, defined by each grantee, so while that gives us some flexibility, we also have to determine, uh, what those definitions are, and as you can imagine, there are a number of departments that we need to consult when we're looking at these expenses, um, and so this led us to the comprehensive effort to organize using our ECC structure to do so, and that was what, um, city manager Phillips introduced to you tonight in her COVID-19 remarks earlier, so this is an overview, uh, we activated that planning section of our ECC or Emergency Communications, uh, Center, there are three overall units that were activated, specifically the recovery unit, the documentation unit, and the situational status unit, all three of these units have objectives which will aid in the recovery of the city, the situational status unit is collecting and providing current information with which we use to inform, uh, recommendations and, uh, decisions, the internal group is focused on collecting that information from across our organization, while the external group is focused on collecting information from throughout our community. The documentation unit, which is an important unit for us, is responsible for collecting and organizing the documents related to COVID-19 overall to our response and recovery, uh, this is providing ease of access and ensuring that we have the right documentation, so it's available for when we submit our reimbursement requests, um, as well as any future audits that we may, uh, that we are subject to based on accepting these funds. The, uh, recovery unit is working currently in four teams to address our return to work, and as it pans directly to this item only, um, I'll talk just a bit about the cost recovery group, so, I'm personally leading the cost recovery group, which is primarily focused on ensuring that the city is able to receive all eligible disaster assistance and our, uh, recovery funds, so in addition to the CARES Act funding, um, there are others that are out there, so for instance, you may have heard of the, uh, public assistance, uh, through FEMA, um, that comes out, that helps us respond, and so that's another source of funding in addition to this, and the group will be responsible for researching those other possible funding sources, so once they research and they got those sources, um, the group will also be interpreting guidance issued in relation to those sources, um, then determine what expenses throughout the organization are actually eligible, and then outline the documentation requirements for each, uh, the members of this group have been identified and the group's charter, uh, has been drafted, and so we will begin meeting actually this week, and we'll also meet in the future, um, as, as much as the need arises, and so if there is a new funding source that is, uh, extended to us potentially, then they may continue to meet, or if there's any new guidance that comes out on a prior funding source that we were already, uh, aware of, they may come back together and continue meeting. I'm sorry about that, okay, there we go, I think we got it, so, now that I've discussed how, uh, staff is organized to, uh, address some of the aspects of recovery, I would like to return to the strategy that staff is proposing for this specific item and council's consideration this evening, and that is the allocation of the 1.4 million of these CARES Act funds, so of that 1.4 million, staff, I anticipate about $500,000 in city-related expenses that may be eligible for reimbursement, uh, furthermore, staff is recommending an allocation of, of 500,000 toward addressing the community needs, so to be clear, community assistance would include both businesses as well as resident assistance, some areas of priority that we've heard, um, already from council, um, during your MAFS meeting, uh, and from also initial conversations we've had with some nonprofits and businesses, um, in the community, uh, we would like to address things such as food insecurity, uh, rental and utility assistance, domestic violence support, um, also, uh, we heard that benefit enrollment support is really critical right now, so in addition to that, um, you'll be hearing a little bit more after this item from, uh, our economic development manager Jeanie Ash on the King County business funding, um, and so, uh, this, we, we would also care well with that, um, to ensure that our Snohomish County businesses are being supported as well, staff is recommending that council make these initial allocations and come back in the future to allocate the remaining, um, $400,000, and so the reason why, um, uh, we're looking at keeping the $400,000 aside is to offer some flexibility, so as new rules and the guidance become available, um, it seems like it comes out weekly, and sometimes even it feels like daily, um, this would allow us to make concerns arise that we, um, you know, as businesses move through the phased recovery and the modified phases of recovery, um, and restarting our.
Hang on, hang on Kelly, we just lost you. Kelly, can you hear me? Kelly? No, she's.
So with that, I will, uh, wrap up staff recommended actions, on this item is to direct us to proportion, or, um, to proportion potential reimbursements of the state shared CARES Act funding to fund, uh, city cost recoveries up to $500,000 at this time, community response effort, um, up to $500,000 at this time, and then to bring the remaining funds, uh, $400,000 back to council, and then later than August fourth, twenty twenty for allocation, so at this time I'm more than hoping to answer, or try to answer any questions that you may have, uh, regarding the plan.
Council member Dour.
All right, thank you, Council, um, I appreciate all the effort that has gone into trying to figure out where best to, um, allocate these funds, I appreciate the holding 400,000 back, um, to be able to adjust, um, should things arise, uh, and then I would say in terms of nonprofits, that the thing, there's so many needs, obviously, um, and they're only risen in this, in this, um, pandemic, the things that I'm focused on, that I would like to see us, um, think about in terms of nonprofits, is, I've already brought up domestic violence, obviously, um, and I understand it has to be centered around, uh, Bothell, um, Bothell needs and, and, and Bothell, um, residents, uh, the other thing that I'm hearing a lot about in terms of, um, well, COVID-related is, and I don't know how this might apply, so, um, forgive me if it's not, if I'm not being super articulate, but I think we have a childcare crisis, and I think a lot of, um, there are, there are businesses, childcare centers that are probably in crisis, if not going out of business, and, um, what we, whatever we can do to support, um, childcare, I think is really, really critical moving forward and getting our economy back, because if people can't go back to work because they have no childcare, our economy is going to continue to suffer, if people can't go back and make money and then spend money, um, we're going to be in big trouble, and so I would just ask if, if we could maybe look into that specific criteria or that specific category of need, um, in addition to all the others that I understand we have, like, uh, you know, homeless and, um, so, so many things, uh, in so many ways people are being impacted, but I would just ask that we maybe put a little bit of, um, research into that partic- those two particular categories, I would really appreciate it, thanks so much.
Deputy Mayor Zorins.
Oh, I, my mic has been on this whole time, that's embarrassing, I'm sorry, guys, um, so, uh, with what King County is doing for, that, that Jeanie Ash is coming up with, we can tap into this to help out with Snohomish piece, did I understand you, um, earlier on that, so that we can make sure all of Bothell's covered, businesses are covered, and, and then, you know, I, you've put so much thought in this, I, I, I haven't, I have complete trust with how you've broken it down between 500 and 500 and, and a reserve, you're already steps away, so many steps ahead of, uh, my thinking on this, the only, the only added, the only piece that has my attention is, uh, utility relief, it doesn't often get attention, um, that's going to be impacted more with job loss and that's with, uh, utility billing, um, that, that affects the health of the city and also helps people who are trying to stay in their homes and what do they, what do they pay, so it helps, it's a win-win for the city and the residents, so, um,
So, and I know that you will give that to do attention as well. Those are my only comments. Thank you for being in the trenches for this.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. So I know that there are so many nonprofits serving our community, and I so much appreciate them because our people are in great need. So one of the ones I want to bring up, though, is this North Shore Senior Center, because they are feeding our people as well. Every Tuesday and Friday, they have meals for the seniors. The seniors have a very difficult time, you know, with their wellness and their mental health right now, and the senior center is calling them and saying, how are you? How is it going? They're putting in a great effort. They needed to raise $500,000 through an auction, which has been canceled. So we're all trying to get the community to contribute. I hope the city can do this as well with the CARES Act.
Councilmember McAuliffe, I will just say that I have been in direct contact with Ms. Nice, the executive director over there at the senior center, and do understand they are serving a number of our families, and I do believe that these funds would definitely help support the things that they're doing in our community and be appropriate.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Yes, they are wonderful.
All right, who else would like to have a question or comment? Anybody else? Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I guess my way didn't work online thing here. So I wanted to ask a question around the human services funding that we, that we currently have, and how we allocate those funds. So obviously, the senior center has been doing a lot of good things within our community and helping a lot of seniors within our community. I was just curious if, if the funding is, if I'm, if I'm understanding correctly, the funding is only, you can only allocate funding for COVID-related items from a certain date to a certain date, is that correct?
That's correct.
So in our, any of these funds would be reimbursement, is that correct? So do we have, should we have already spent these funds, or are there reimbursements for funds that we're about to give?
Yeah, both is the answer to that. So we're able to go back all the way to March 1st and submit for those reimbursements as funds that we've already spent. And then as we progress through October 31st is our deadline. Anything that we spend that is a qualifying expense, we can then apply. So as we go off, we can, we can do everything from March 1st to date that we've already incurred, and then as we incur it up to October 31st, we can continue to apply for reimbursements along the way.
Okay, so as an example, if we've given money to the senior center, if we haven't given money to the senior center up to this point during COVID, that we give it money to them hypothetically from today moving forward, that money would be able to be, possibly be able to be reimbursed, is that correct?
I'm not sure I'm following exactly where you're going with that. There, i- if it's money that we've already allocated in our budget, then it is not eligible for reimbursement. But if it is to implement COVID-19 public health measures, so for instance, the senior center shifted their efforts from meals at the senior center to meal delivery, there may be some possibility. We'll, we'll have to really dive into some of those very specifics to, to figure that out, to make sure that it does in fact qualify. So there's kind of some competing things there where maybe not everything will, but some might.
Got you. So it, it sounds to me like there's some pretty in-depth work that you need to do internally to figure out and ensure that the funds that we're going to be expending are in fact going to be reimbursable.
Yes.
So we don't want to expend a bunch of funds on something that may not be reimbursable and put us in a, even more of a deficit? Is that what I'm hearing?
Absolutely. With the, with everything that you're hearing about, our budget and the gap that we have to close, it's really, really important that the funds that we expend are on things that are reimbursable. So that's why we have this cost recovery team with representatives from multiple departments as well as finance, as well as legal, to ensure and to scrutinize everything that comes through before, anything before we spend it, and to ensure in these instances that they would be fully reimbursable. So that is the goal.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, I know it's, it's important for us to, to understand where that, the money's going to go first, but almost more importantly, to, to know that we're going to get reimbursed, if it's going to have a further impact on our, our overall budget. You had mentioned the connection with Snohomish County businesses as well. The funding, the, the $500,000 for city cost recovery is for all of our city. Does it matter if it's King County or Snohomish County, or it's because this, this, is this all for King County?
It is for all of our city, the main funds for Bothol residents. So I was alluding to the upcoming item is specifically from King County. And so those funds, I believe, I don't know that we've gotten any additional guidance, but as I understood, those funds were specific to King County businesses. So I was just using it as an example, that we would make sure the, what's being proposed for those King County funds, that we would provide that same, that same benefit to, to those Snohomish County as well.
Oh, that's great. Yeah, I just, I wanted to just clarify that, the conversation around King County and Snohomish County, I, well, I understand we, our two counties, you know, Bothol's one, one city, and so I want to make sure that our efforts, you know, and I know all of us work very, very hard to ensure that we're representing our entire community. So thank you, and I look forward to hearing how organized we're helping.
Councilmember Agnew.
I, I think you're doing a great job. I, I like all the ideas that you have and you're floating around. I, I will give another shout out to the North Shore Senior Center for the work that they're doing, because they are feeding a lot of the Botholites that, that are having a tough time right now. So anything we can do to help support the businesses that are out helping the community is, is good by me.
I too would say North Shore Senior Center is a very worthwhile recipient of some of those funds. I think their multifaceted services really has that breadth for our community. And it's just what they're used to doing, and that's, that's a piece of it I like as well as, is there's not a lot of startup costs or procedural costs that will diminish the funds that we're providing here. I think that's one of the criterias we should also look at, is something that any of the processes that we determine to distribute these funds is to minimize that and focus on efficient items that aren't, that we're not having to recreate and bring in a whole lot of extra staff for, to manage. So I, I have full faith in, in the staff on and assistant city manager of, of wading through these processes. And I, the last piece is also just being able to spend that money before the October deadline, because that's the, that's the challenging part. If we don't, if we don't spend it, then it's, then it's, there's a lot of good it can do. So it's, I think that's another key piece to these items, is make sure that it's, that it makes, meets the criteria and that it can be, meet the deadline. Some little feedback there, huh? All right. Councilmember Doer? Ooh. All right, we have...
Recommended action.
Yep, I got that. Councilmember Agnew, I'm going to say, Councilmember Agnew has that second. All sorts of craziness here, so. All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Doer, a second by Councilmember Agnew for the direction of staff to proportion of the potential reimbursements to city cost recovery of $500,000 and community response efforts of $500,000, and to bring the remaining funds of $400,000 back to council by August 4th, 2020 for allocation. Any discussion? All right, seeing none? City clerk?
Okay, please say yea or nay when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe? Councilmember McAuliffe, yea or nay?
Yea, 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 yea.
Councilmember, Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Councilmember Doer?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Motion passes 7-0.
All right, great. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Assistant City Manager. You have just a small little task ahead of you here, so I, good luck to you, and I know you're up to the task. All right. Onto AB 20 dash 070, consideration of options for public street and private property use in response to COVID-19. So city, it looks like the city manager, Jennifer Phillips, start this off.
Yes, thank you very much. Just a very brief presentation. These are three items that we're looking for council direction on, so I'm just going to go through what those items are. First is maximizing the use of Main Street to allow outdoor dining and safe social distancing by either closing Main Street or implementing all the flex zones at no cost to the businesses. A second is amending the Bothell Municipal Code through an interim ordinance to allow restaurants to use private property parking, and/or parking lots for outdoor dining. And the third is a direction to look at closing residential streets to support outdoor activities and safe social distancing. So there's three major policy directions that we're looking for in this item, or I'm looking for in this item, and I'll walk you through each of them. We sort of put them together because each one, they, they are sort of all COVID-related, and it's, it's about supporting our community and supporting our businesses, but each is an, is a separate item. So as you deliberate and give direction, if you could provide direction for each item individually, that would be very helpful to me, so I know that there is consensus and a majority of council that's interested in each of the three policy items. So for the first one, there was a request for staff to look at the closing of Main Street as an opportunity to support the businesses and a place to gather for our community as we work our way through the phases of the COVID-19 crisis. So we provided you with two options for Main Street. One would be to utilize the flex spaces, and these were designed when the Main Street was revitalized, and there are the parking stalls that can be converted into flex zones. There are a couple of restaurants that have already used those in the first couple of years that we've had this implemented. And so the, so the option is to implement all of those flex zones and provide opportunity then for the community to come down. It's more gathering space, the restaurants, if they chose to, could then serve into those flex spaces. Businesses could also use the flex space if they wanted to have maybe some merchandise or a table out. There still would be a permitting process to make sure that everything is safe and that we have ADA access, and everything is done for the safety of our community and the merchants. But we would waive the fees or any revenues related to implementing those flex zones. And again, just as a reminder, we're talking about a period of just three months. We feel that once school, especially university, but school in general gets back in session in September, that Main Street is critical for the flow through the downtown, and so our recommendation for this is for the three months ending on Labor Day weekend. The second option is to close Main Street, so we would get ecology blocks on each end at 101st and 102nd, so it's just one block of Main Street, and it would be closed for that same period of time, about three months for the summer. And this would then allow folks to walk through the, through the street, have tables out there, if that's an option, to be able to stand around and have small groups. One concerning factor of this is the overgathering. So as we move through the different phases, phase three is still only groups of 50. So that area would be considered sort of a zone, and it's, it's not intended to be an event gathering, it's not intended to have special events, it doesn't open it up for, just to have a party and encourage, you know, hundreds and hundreds of people to come down at one time. We still have to be thoughtful and in compliance with the governor's orders. We don't want to violate that as, as we move through these phases and put anyone in our community at jeopardy. So that's just something to think about. I, I don't think it's insurmountable, but it is one of the challenges of closing the street entirely. But that is your second option, and we provided you with the cost of doing that. It's about $7,200, and those are the, the cost basically of closing that and then reopening it at, at the end of the summer. So that's for Main Street, and we look forward to your discussion and direction on that. The second item is for outdoor dining, so we have, Main Street is certainly, you know, the heart of, of our old downtown and who we are as Bothell, but we also have several, over 100 establishments that serve some sort of food and other businesses that might be interested in expanding outside of their indoor facility so that they can provide more services to customers, especially if we're going to move into our phase 1.5, which is only 25% capacity in restaurants. Phase two is 50%, and so we're looking for options to support our restaurants and our businesses so they can try to prosper and come out of this crisis that, that they've certainly been in and, and give them the opportunity to serve more patrons. So this would be an interim ordinance, similar to the ordinance that we did, that you just did the public hearing on for extending permits. This is a similar situation. It would be an interim ordinance. It would be good for 60 days, and otherwise we'd bring it back for a public hearing and extend it, but it does offer the community or the businesses the opportunity to use private property, which currently is prohibited by the Bothell Municipal Code, that then could be used for some sort of dining. We still recommend a permit process because, again, you have to make sure that things are safe and accessible and that tables and chairs are properly placed for, for everyone's safety. However, whether you choose to charge a fee for that process is also at the, at the council's discretion. What we're looking for on this item tonight is direction to come back to you, come back to you on June 9th with that interim ordinance. Staff is working to prepare it. Normally, we can't do a two-day turnaround, but in preparation of a possible direction to do that, we will be prepared to do that. If you choose not to move forward with this, then this would be the end of that item tonight. The third item is a policy consideration, is to direct staff to bring back information with regards to healthy streets. So if the council's interested in having staff evaluate the residential streets within our community for an opportunity to look at what other communities are doing to provide more open space and, and safe areas for our community to bike and walk. These are complicated issues. There was no way for us to bring any specific information, and I won't be able to answer very many questions tonight. We've done no research on this. As just a, as just a quick reminder, we are on furloughs as well, so staff time has been reduced by 10%, and our workload with COVID has been really dramatically increased. And so I haven't asked staff to put any time into this until I make sure that, or receive direction from majority of council to work on, on something this on something this major that wasn't in our work plan. So this would be the opportunity for council to discuss this item and provide direction to me. And then I would work with staff and we could bring something back optimistically in July. I understand it's the warm season and so I would need help on prioritizing whether this was something that council was very interested in and would like to implement as soon as possible. That would be helpful direction as well, so I know where to prioritize it. But potentially in July or early August. And then bring additional information, research and the cost and streets and how we would implement something like that. So those are the three policy directions that I'm looking for tonight. And I look forward to responding to any questions and providing any additional information.
All right, I say we handle each one of the three separately, starting off with Main Street and go through discussion on that. Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Manager, for the intro. I brought this one up, so I just wanted to maybe share with people what I was thinking. I really would like to look at closing Main Street for several reasons. I don't know if everyone saw the King County proposal. They didn't make Phase 2. And so the county executive has rolled out kind of a Phase 1A or interim phase that includes no reopening of indoor restaurant space, but 50% capacity of outdoor space. Clearly, some of these restaurants have almost no or none outdoor space and opening the parking spaces is not gonna do it. And so I think that provides even more sort of incentive for us to look at opening a street where we can provide more seating. One of the examples that I've seen recently on Twitter was the city of Port Townsend and they closed the street down and they have it's not owned by anybody, but they have seating arranged within the street socially distanced. And what it really does is support all of the restaurants or food establishments or drinking establishments within a certain area, so people have a place to go once they've done their takeout. And so it would, I mean, this potentially could also help Hoppin' Hound and it could help the Teriyaki Place. Festival Street, there are a number of establishments. We received a lot of, we received feedback from Lee Henderson, but also it would provide potentially the ability for some stores to have expanded retail space because I think also part of that King County directive for Phase 1A or whatever you wanna call it is that they're allowed, retail is allowed to have 25% of occupancy, which obviously greatly reduces their ability to do sales. And, you know, regarding the $7,200, I think sales tax could potentially make up for that. Not to mention just maybe helping to salvage some businesses that might not otherwise be able to make it through this sort of really limited ability to reopen. I, yeah, I think three months is reasonable. I think that's the, you know, those are our prime Pacific Northwest, good weather times. And with that, I guess I'd just close out with, you know, that's my argument. That's what I think. I also think we might look at Festival Street, closing that. But potentially. So anyway, that's where I'm coming from. I just wanna, I wanna do what we can to save our restaurants, save our businesses. It's in the city's best interest for us to have a healthy, thriving business community. And, you know, some of these businesses are probably on the brink, so I wanna do whatever we can and also provide a place for the community. The bigger the space, rather than just parking spaces, but if we're opening Main Street, then that's gonna provide more area and more space for people to be there and support those businesses. Thank you.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Councilmember McAuliffe, could you hang up? You're on there twice and that's what's causing the feedback. If you've called in through your phone, could you please, please disconnect that one?
Yeah, I'm here for a moment.
Okay, are we all right?
No. I'm sorry. I need you to disconnect if you've called in via the phone because you're on the, you're on the meeting twice and that's causing feedback.
Okay, so I just turned it off. Nope. Sorry.
It doesn't matter.
Now what do I do?
Rose, Councilmember McAuliffe, can you hang up and try to come back in? You're showing up twice in here and I think that's what's giving you the feedback.
Can the meeting host just end the connection that she's not on?
We're trying, but it's not working.
Why does someone else wait for a while and Rosemary goes and just turns in another room? The drawer. And then come back. Just an idea.
We've gotta get her to hang up the other line, though. You logged on twice. I think when you left, I don't, I don't know if you realized when you left, you may have re-logged in, but you're logged in twice. So you need to, wherever you're logged in, you're on the meeting twice. You're still on mute.
Councilmember McAuliffe, if you could, if you could hang up and then just log out and then rejoin us, then I think that would solve the problem. Thank you.
Oh, yep.
Okay, now she's good. Yep, we just fixed it.
Okay.
Am I there?
All right, Councilmember McAuliffe, you're, you're, there's just one of you now.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I just wanted to speak on behalf of the people I've spoken to on Main Street. You know, there's two restaurants that are interested, but the lion's den is redoing themselves. And so they may also be interested. Hardest sushi might be as well as the Thai, once we open it up. I went to Leavenworth this weekend and I was very impressed with the tables they had out in the street. And not only that, but the shops were all open to like tables in their doorways. You could come in, I mean, you could order from there. Even the retails could do that. Right now Harmony Massage is saying, oh, just call our number, we'll deliver out the door. So it's not just for the restaurants, it's also for every shop. We really need to support them because this is a very difficult time for all of our retail people and our restaurant people together. So I hope you all support this. Thank you, Davina, for bringing it forward. Does that work?
All right, who, Councilmember Agnew.
Joe, one of the emails we got was to do a pilot program on this to see, see what's going on and know it works out. I think I like the idea. I wouldn't mind doing a pilot project for a couple of months just to get an idea of, is it working? How's it working? I agree that we need to do everything we can possibly do for our businesses and our restaurants. And I do like the idea of closing down Main Street.
Deputy Mayor Zorns.
I'm having so much fun listening to all of you guys. I forgot that I'm on here, too. I have to, like, four basic things to go through. One is one of the options was outdoor dining on private property. Would that allow restaurants who weren't on Main Street to move their, move tables and things outside?
I don't understand the question. I think the mayor wanted to take the three.
I think she circled it back to Main Street.
I don't, I don't.
It's just, it's just part of the, as far as including, because we can say that.
Can you slow down? Deputy Mayor Zorns, can you please slow down? You're breaking up. One more time, please.
Okay, I can say, I'm trying to include another group with what we're trying with Main Street. I can save it later. So my second thing is that the mayor's meeting today, that you were talking about liquor, outdoor liquor license. Have you even put that on there?
I'm sorry, you broke up again. Could you, could you do that one more time?
No problem. So at the mayor's meeting today, there was comment that there is an effort to expedite outdoor liquor licenses. Because I could anticipate like being out there staff, could we, you know, have alcohol out in the middle of Main Street? So have you heard anything or had any discussion on that?
No, we haven't. The liquor license doesn't fall under the city's purview, so that would be up to the, to the restaurant owner to be responsible for that.
It would just be, but the conflict would be on the city street, but city doesn't have to worry about that. It's what you're telling me.
Not that I'm aware of, but these items came forward very, very quickly. So if there is something that we need to look at to make sure that that's the proper place or there's the proper atmosphere for that or through the permit process, we'll figure that out.
Okay. I, you know, on, on one level, the flex zone seems like a sensible way to slow down mass movement. On the other hand, closing all of Main Street allows more public safety. So I'm inclined to go with closing all of that one section from 102nd to 101st. One, I got an email from one person who said when they went through Leavenworth, what they liked about it was they could go sample different restaurants and pick and choose and then go find a sunny place to sit. So that might be a bonus for the restaurants. And then the fourth thing is just a nod to Lee Henderson speaking for some of the people who have restaurants there that their intention is to do, make sure that everything is safe and following the rules. But she really stressed that they're all on survival mode and I say I can appreciate it, but I don't fully understand it. So anything that we can do to help, I'm in on. That's my two cents.
Councilmember Thompson, did I see you raise your hand earlier?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think this is an obvious win. We give people more space to gather. We give people reasons to want to go support our businesses. It's, I am in favor of closing all of Main Street for both of those reasons. It provides more room for people to feel safe going to businesses because it's, we don't just have to give them the space to operate. People have to feel safe or they're not gonna go dine. And I think if we just close down the flex spots and we leave all that space unavailable to them in the middle of the road, I think that not as many people will come. And if it is too popular, if there is overcrowding and too many people come to support our businesses, I think the obvious next step is to close another street to provide more room for safety. Because if there's too many people down there, that's a lot of people that are spending money at our local businesses. And I think that's phenomenal and I think that's something we should encourage. I would love to include talking about 101st in between Main Street and 183rd in this conversation. There's only a few businesses that front that street and they all have vehicle access and parking in the back. So that's a way we could conceivably have more space available so we can be safer as well as induce more people to come to Main Street and enjoy Main Street. I am a little concerned that we're not being quite nimble enough. You know, as Councilmember Doer mentioned, for the next two weeks, restaurants that have outdoor seating available can serve people. Restaurants that don't, can't. And if we, you know, if we don't act quickly, we're costing our businesses. Especially over the course of the next two weeks when they just, they can't serve people. I'm also concerned about what it would look like to permit this and how much time that would take. Both in terms of getting the businesses functioning again, as well as just extra staff time having to deal with that. If there's a way we could provide some sort of guidance to them and saying, here are the guidelines that you need to follow and we did not have to do a permit, I would be very in favor of that as well. So to summarize, I'm for closing Main Street. I'm just worried that we're not acting quickly enough to help businesses that, you know, like Lee Henderson mentioned, are just trying to survive. And I think we should do everything we can to help them survive.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm encouraged by the conversation here and listening. Not only to the council members speaking to this, but the letters that we received. It gives me a sense of community in hearing what we're trying to do for our businesses. One of the things that is, that I think we all keep in mind also as we do what we do here is also the residents in our community. And we're all going through a tough time. So as we, as we talk about helping businesses, I think we're, I think the real conversation is around helping our community. So with that said, I did have, I did have a couple of questions on, one, the design, the original design and intent of the money that we invested within Main Street. What was the original intent? And why did we design with the flex space the way we did and the planters the way we did? Is, is closing Main Street one of the things that we had, had studied during the design?
I can ask Director Lenhart if she'd like. I'm not aware of whether that was studied with the design. I know that it was not part of the project to close Main Street. But I can, Erin, I don't know if you know.
I don't know uphand. This is Erin Lenhart. I don't know about any plans to create the ability to close Main Street itself. I wasn't here when the design first started. So, but there has been conversations since then about how we can modify the existing street so that we could do similar bollards at the street ends, but that's, that would require additional design and additional funding.
Okay. And then the, can somebody tell me the number of businesses that are on Main Street? Does anybody have to answer that? And I apologize for asking that question.
I believe it's 12 or 13. Somewhere in the dozen range.
Okay, and is it, if I'm, am I correct in it's four restaurants or five restaurants?
It's currently four, with a fifth that's closed.
The fifth is closed, okay. And are all of the restaurants in favor? Or to that matter, is there a number of folks, business owners that are in favor or are there any businesses that are opposed to it? I guess the reason I'm asking that question is because it's a, there's obviously a positive impact to our community. But is there anybody who's concerned about a negative impact?
So again, this item, we put this item together very quickly. And so I did have the economic development manager reach out to the businesses on Main Street. We'd also reached out to the businesses on the multiway, on the, on the access roads. So we spent quite a bit of time trying to reach out and communicate. We didn't talk to all the businesses. We specifically talked to the businesses on Main Street, the restaurants on Main Street. And two were very supportive and two did not return our phone calls.
Okay. Um, and then the, the next question I would have is the cost to do this, there's, I think it's seventy-two hundred dollars to close it, uh, is with the ecology blocks. Um, the ecology blocks are the big concrete blocks that, um, I don't know how much they weigh, but a car's not driving through them, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So the safety piece of it, would the people walking around, um, on Main Street, uh, between a hundred and first and a hundred and second, would be, uh, secured by the fact that there's ecology blocks on, um, both ends of Main Street for that one block? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then if there was a, an emergency or something like that, would those blocks need to be moved for, uh, the fire department to get in? Or how, how would that?
Uh, no, they can't be moved. So fire would, fire and police would pull up to, to those, um, blocks and then, um, go into, uh, Main Street and, and provide the services.
Okay. Um, I think it's, um, you know, I'm, I'm leaning, you know, hearing everybody speak and, and seeing the letters, uh, I'm leaning, um, towards this being a positive thing for our community. But, um, I'm also, uh, I also think about being fiscally responsible and making sure, um, that we're providing the same level of services and same, um, opportunities, um, for our entire community. So, um, Councilmember Agnew brought up, uh, a good point, that it does mention something about a pilot program. So I, I would be in favor of, um, you know, support of, of a, a pilot program. Um, but as this did come up pretty quick, um, I don't have all the, the facts. The city manager, you spoke to, um, crowds gathering and, um, we're seeing a lot of crowds gathering right now. And we do not know what the impacts of that are going to be. However, with that said, if our downtown is, um, getting crowded and people are, are winking and dining and, and enjoying our downtown community, as Councilmember Thompson said, if we could open up another street, if that's possible, there, there may be additional costs, uh, to do that. The last question I, I have is, is would any of these costs, um, be able to be, uh, uh, recouped from the, the funding CARES Act fund?
So we believe so, but, you know, as, uh, the assistant city manager shared in her presentation, we haven't vetted all of these, um, costs yet, but it would be certainly something that, that we would investigate any kind of, of activities like this. We, we would, we would make every effort to see if they could be, um, reimbursed through the CARES Act monies. But I, I don't want to commit to a yes, because it's so detailed and, and we just, I'm, I'm just not a hundred percent sure.
Okay. Well, I, I appreciate that. I would definitely be very interested in ensuring that, um, i- i- am I getting an echo? Sorry if I am. No echo?
Nope, you're sounding good.
Okay. Um, I, I definitely would be interested in, in ensuring that if we can get those, those funds back, um, that we tried to do that. Um, but I only, just want to thank, um, Councilmember Duer for, for bringing this forward. And I do want to thank the community for all the letters that we received. I think it's important that, that listening to our community and hearing from our community. Uh, while it wasn't a, a large, uh, set of forty-seven thousand people within our community that we serve, just hearing from our community, I think is important, so that we, we make good decisions. Uh, and so, uh, I think everybody, uh, needs to look on this.
So city manager, I apologize for not asking this, uh, earlier, sending a email over, but I was wondering, um, just the transit traffic that's on Main Street. Um, I haven't heard any comments or any addressing of that on what, you know, Sound Transit in King County have thoughts on this.
We did, we mentioned it in the staff report, and, um, we did talk to both agencies. And we would just need to relocate a bus stop. Um, it would take some work on, on both of those agencies' part, but that's part of their operations, what I always refer to as the machine. So anytime there's construction or, um, any kind of change in the roadway, that's what, what those organizations have to do for their bus routes. And so we have contacted them and let them know, and they can make adjustments and, and not come down Main Street for that period of time.
All right, yeah. I definitely with all the public comment that we've had, uh, there definitely seems to be, you know, that seems to be the vocal majority on this topic. Um, I see a number of you that are, are wanting to do some follow-ups or say something additional. Uh, Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Uh, just, just to follow up, James was asking about businesses on Main Street that weren't as keen on the idea of the closure. Was I understanding that correctly?
No, we didn't. Um, I can, if you'd like, um, the economic development manager is on the line, but that was not, he was just asking if there was, and we did not hear that.
Okay, but I haven't, but, well, I talked to Chamber of Commerce if you, if you wanted to know what their feedback was.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I asked that, I asked that question to Brittany at the Chamber of Commerce, and she gave me some follow-up information that might help, be helpful, if you would like it.
Certainly, we spoke to Brittany as well, um, but if you'd like to share what you heard, um, absolutely.
Okay. Well, she said there were two businesses that weren't sure that they were keen on the idea. One was the optical business, and the other is a hair salon. And, uh, that was their first reaction. Second reaction, they came back to Brittany and they said, we're fine with it, we're happy to give it a try. So that's coming through the chamber, that there were two that weren't entirely sure about it. Um, but thinking about it, they decided that they would like to give it a try.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the chamber meeting, and those two businesses said, we will do whatever it takes to support everybody on Main Street. And so, everybody wants to support each other, and they're willing to, to do this in order to, um, help and support everyone. So I think it's really important to understand, they all care as a community, as a family, they're together, and they want to make sure the restaurants get to stay, and, and in a way, it will benefit all. So, just my final comment, thank you.
And, uh, Councilmember Duer?
Thank you. I, uh, I recommend we approve Main Street option number two. Second?
City manager, are we looking for a vote on this, or we're just looking direction? All right, so we are looking for a vote.
As long as I know there's a majority, however you'd like to do it, it's your discretion.
Yeah. Um, well, we have a motion and a, a second already, so, uh, any discussion on this? Councilmember Thompson?
Um, I would like to amend the motion to not require a permit.
So then we...
That would then need a second in order to be discussed. Sorry, this is Holberton. That would need a second in order to be discussed.
Councilmember Duer? You're on mute. Oh, okay, now, we didn't hear you.
I, I second that amending motion for discussion purposes.
All right, so we have a, a motion for an amendment and a s- uh, motion for amendment by Councilmember Thompson, a second by Councilmember Duer. So we're looking for a discussion on this. So Councilmember McAuliffe? You're on mute?
I'm not here, am I here?
There you are.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, um, and, and councilmembers, I believe that we maybe shouldn't charge for a permit, but because of the safety issues concerning six feet apart, concerning, um, how we would keep our citizens safe, how not to have too many at one time, I, I kinda think we should lay out required by the health department and at least have a permit that states that. And that's, I mean, I don't think we should charge for it, or we should, but, but I want to expediate it, so it doesn't take a long time to do it. So I guess I'd want to ask the staff, could we do it quickly? And could we do it without charging? And what does that mean for our staff?
All right. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Um, I would like to leave this at, to staff's discretion on what they feel is going to keep the city the safest and what's going to give them the greatest peace of mind for keeping people, um, safe and, and helping to direct businesses, what they need to do. So I, I would like to leave the per- permit option on, in the staff's lap and let them come, come forward with their recommendation.
Councilmember Thompson?
My, uh, Councilmember McAuliffe, uh, really a- addressed the thing that I cared about, which is speed of use and cost. Um, I, I'm not inherently against the permit, as long as we can turn that around very quickly and we're not charging for it. Um, essentially, I want to make this easy, and I want to be nimble to support our businesses, and I don't want to add a lot of process and red tape. Um, if we can do those things, I'm happy to withdraw the motion.
Councilmember McNeil?
Uh, so, point of, uh, I just want to clarify, so, um, in the docket, it says, um, if council chooses to exercise the option of closing Main Street, it should be noted, any entity desiring to host an event...
Can you speak up, please?
...utilizing public property. All right, one more time. In the docket, it says if a council chooses to exercise the option of closing Main Street, it should be noted, any entity designing to host an event utilizing the public property would still be required to follow the special event process. So I'm trying to clarify, if we close Main Street and I go buy food at the ranch, I'm gonna be able to go and eat my food in that area. So I just want, I want to make sure I'm clarifying, everybody still needs to get a permit. Whether or not they pay for that permit is a different story. Just want to clarify.
City manager, I think that's something that staff will look into as part of this process. And we're, we're trying to give the direction on which option and, and direction to move forward with it. So I think those are, I think those are very good discussions and topics, uh, for the staff to go into. So, um, with the short nature of this, staff hasn't had the time to get into all the details. Um, but this is the, I think, the exact discussion they're looking for to really focus their, uh, review of this and for, to bring back the temporary ordinance or ordinance that they would, oh, no, or we just do it. Okay.
Yeah. I agree with that, and I, I withdraw the motion.
City attorney, that the, just once he does the withdrawal, then?
We're, we're back to the main question, um, as to the discussion points on, um, you're expanding the flexible, um, use zones or closing Main Street in entirety. We're back to that discussion, looking for direction from council.
Yep. And so we had a motion by Councilmember Duer with the second by, now I forget who made the second. Uh, all right.
Councilmember, Councilmember had the second.
Okay. Councilmember McAuliffe had the second. Uh, so, all right, so, all right, so we're back to Councilmember Duer with the motion for option two of closing Main Street, uh, with, uh, Councilmember McAuliffe with the second, uh, discussion on that. If none, city clerk?
Please state yea or nay when I call your name, Councilmember, uh, sorry, Mayor, Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe?
Mute.
Councilmember McAuliffe? Councilmember McAuliffe?
Yea.
Thank you. Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Councilmember McNeil?
I muted myself. I don't see it. I don't, I don't, I don't see it. I don't know what you're talking about. Oh. Sorry. Okay.
Councilmember McNeil, please say yea or nay.
Yea.
Councilmember Duer?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Motion passes seven zero.
All right. Passes unanimously on that. So on to...
Mayor Olson, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, sir.
So if we're closing Main Street and, um, we're talking about, uh, we still want to have a, a permit in order to ensure safety, um, can I get some direction on the, the, the public area use permits? Uh, so two questions. Can I get direction on the wa- perhaps waiving the fees for the public area use permits? Uh, the permits right now are for the flexible zones, uh, that were addressed in there, but we still need direction on if someone were to try to, um, use the, the right-of-way in Main Street and, and apply for a public area use permit. The council's direction also to waive those fees. And my second question is, um, if someone, if a restaurant has already paid for their flexible zone for the, for the season, uh, does council want to refund those or allow that? Name and to stand.
Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Uh, first, first question, way, if, if we're waiving the fee, yes, waive the fees. And second, for those who've already paid, my inclination is that that would roll over for next year. Unless it's, unless it's this, this becomes a sticky wicket and we, and, uh, we face this again next year, closing Main Street. My, my, my inclination is, uh, give them the option to just have it there for next year, instead of refund.
Councilmember McAuliffe? Mute.
Waive the fee for now, and if there is some that have paid, move it forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Agnew? Mute. Sir? There you go.
Okay, I'll try it again then. I, I agree with waiving the fee, and then if they've already paid for the flex, uh, move that to next year.
Councilmember Duer?
I agree. Um, waive the fee and, uh, roll over to next year. Uh, regarding public use permit, I think we need to still charge if someone wants to use Main Street for, for, um, like a special event. I think that's what, um...
That was, that was my question. That was the first question, is whether we should waive the public, um, area use permit fee? And so far, it's had three yeses.
So I misunderstood. I thought you were asking in addition whether or not we were charging for like a special event permit. Did I misunderstand?
So special event permit, public use, public, public area use, is that...
So, wh- I, I think the confusion is, are you talking about the flex spaces? Or are you talking about special event permit on Main Street?
Special event.
Two separate questions.
Not, no, no, I'm not talking about the flex spaces. My question is whether or not for, if someone wants to do a special event and use an area that is not part of the flexible zones, do you want to still charge for those permits?
Okay. I am going to say, no. I do want to charge, because I know there's been a new work involved for staff in, um, having a special event. So I personally think we should charge for a special event on Main Street.
I'm, I'm sorry, that question actually wasn't up for discussion. I'm not quite sure how it came up. That was not part of the staff report. So it was very clear that a special event was a separate item, and, and I'm not asking for those fees to be waived at this time. separate item and, and I'm not asking for those fees to be waived at this time.
Okay. Well, there's some confusion with what the city attorney just said.
I, I understand that and I think what, what I've heard the council say so far is, is what was in the staff report is not to charge the businesses for, um, using, um, basically would be the flex zones and closing the whole street, but we're not discussing the special event permit this evening. I'm not looking for that direction, um, at this time.
Okay. So sorry for the confusion. I agree with the previous councilmembers, waive the fee, move it forward if they've already paid.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. It seems like we already have a consensus, but I wanted to just follow up on the special event permit. Um, I just merely brought it up because if we do have a special event on Main Street, they would still require a permit. But for the businesses along Main Street, um, the, that permit would be, the permits, um, for this would be waived. Um, I just had a quick question though. What is the flex fee permit? What is the flex permit fee?
Uh, it is, there's an applica, uh, let's see, there's, hold on, let me look back here. Um, it's $458 per flex zone. And then, um, there's a square, there's a per month, um, per square, um, per, per month, per square, uh, revenue fee as well of 1440.
Okay. Thank you so much, city manager. I just wanted to clarify what.
All right. Councilmember Thompson. All right. Giving thumbs up.
I agree with everybody else. Yeah.
Yep. No, just giving everyone the opportunity. Um, all right. So I, I agree with that. Uh, and with the, just the special use permit, I think that's a whole different discussion that will get figured out and just as part of, if this is becoming more of a public space, whether it can be used for any individual group or not. Um, so that will, that will get hashed out by city staff, I believe. Um. Councilmember McAuliffe, we're, I think we have what we need for this topic. So I just want to keep moving on. City attorney, do you have what you need now? All right. Great. All right. Onto the second item there. Um, so we have the interim ordinance to amend the Bothell Municipal Code allowing the ref, restaurants to use private property or parking lots. Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And, um, I spoke to the Cottage Restaurant and to Julio's and they were very excited about this possibility. Uh, my question is how long would it take for this ordinance to pass?
Our commitment would be to bring it back on, uh, the ninth of June and I believe it, uh, I confirmed with the city attorney, but I believe it's effective immediately, but I would have to ask. I don't know if it has a five day wait period or not. Paul, city attorney.
You're on mute. There you go.
Immediately.
Five days?
I believe immediately. I'll have to check on.
I, I think we, we talked about this. My understanding is that as an interim ordinance, it's immediate. I, I thought that's the conversation that we had. We're, we're truly doing this at breakneck speed. So.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Sorry, I didn't finish. I'm sorry. Am I on?
You are.
Okay. So Snohomish County, so Chickafalay and some of those other restaurants up there, this is important to them as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I had a mouth on the loose. I'm trying to find it. Uh, yes, I think that we need to give our businesses as much as a level playing field as possible. So as long as, I'm, I'm totally fine with using parking spaces temporarily as we battle COVID, as long as it's within the, their particular parking spaces that are assigned to them for normal business use and it doesn't bleed out into other businesses. That's, that's my take on it.
All right. Councilmember Thompson.
I agree with the previous comments. I think this is a no brainer. Letting those businesses use all the resources they have to try to survive in this time, um, is, is, I think, a really positive thing for the community.
All right. I'll say, yeah, with the warmer weather, more out dining, out, more, uh, amenable to outdoor dining, I think this is, uh, a, a good idea as well. So I'm in favor of this one. Uh, I'm seeing just a majority of it. So I'm going to move on to our next item. Uh, so we have number three.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I, I would like an opportunity to speak to this.
Go ahead, please.
Is that okay?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, um, as far as the, uh, the permit timelines and getting this done, I think, I think the city manager said it could be done immediately. Um, but I think it speaks volumes to, uh, the city, uh, for bringing this forward and being proactive with this because this is sending a message to our community that it's not just about Main Street. It's about all of our businesses across our community. Uh, and I wanted to just take a moment and give the city a shout out for that because it's important to remember how much time and effort we put into businesses that have, um, struggled, like Carolina Smokes and others in the Canyon Park area. So I just want to say, give a special shout out to the city and all the staff for the hard work on this because while we just got this recently and we just started looking at this, it's important to understand that these small wins will help our entire community, not just a small subset. So thank you.
Councilmember Doer.
I just want to say, well said, councilmember McNeil. I agree.
Councilmember Thompson.
I just, uh, wanted to ask a quick process question. Um, our businesses, if they have outdoor seating, are, can open now and start serving people. Is there any way that we can take a vote and implement something like this now instead of waiting another week where they can't serve people?
Uh, no, I'm sorry. We weren't able to complete the ordinance in time. It's, it, it's not just the ordinance itself, it's the process. So as you mentioned, councilmember Thompson, the ability to be nimble. If we had brought you something tonight, we basically would have had you pass something and then had to tell the businesses, we weren't ready to accept your requests. So, um, we really are, I just can't tell you how hard we're working to try to get these things done. And we, we really tried to bring it to you tonight and weren't able to complete everything. So the best we can do is, is you have to have the ordinance, um, and we have to have the process in place. Um, so the ninth was the best we could do.
Please don't take my question as a criticism. It wasn't meant that way at all. Um, I was just curious if there was a way we could do something faster.
All right. Onto number three. So we want to return by, uh, city manager, can you refresh the direction that you're looking for, for number three?
Um, I have, again, no, no research. I have no information. So I'm not in a position to answer any questions. What I'm looking for is direction from the council if there is interested, if there is interest of the majority of the council for staff to begin work on such a project and bring it back to the council sometime in July, um, or early August.
So city manager, I just want to ask a question first. I mean, I know our staff is already, you know, burdened with all we have with COVID and all these different fires that are, are popping up, uh, as well as the reduced time from the furloughs. Um, I mean, is there? I know this is a tough question, but I mean, is there an estimate of what kind of impact to staff, what, you know, this is asking for, you know, to develop or to dig into this?
I don't really have a time estimate. Um, other things will slide. This, this will be, what we'll do is we'll bring up a committee together of all the departments, police department, fire department, public works, parks and rec, uh, the city manager's office and will, and, uh, community development and, and we'll look at, um, you know, what does it take to, um, depending on what your direction is, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I understand this item fully. So I'm also looking for some information about what it is you'd like us to look at. Um, but if it's street closures or some sort of modification of streets, um, it's, well, I S would have to be involved as well because we'd have to basically look at the grid of the entire city, look at all the streets, um, identify streets that potentially could, could have some sort of modification or closure to them. So it is a, it is a major project. Um, these are absolutely council, um, directives. If, if this is a council priority, I would then reshuffle the, the workload and, and other projects would be pushed aside and we would make this a priority for the council.
All right. Thank you. I think that was the framework that I was looking for, for when people discuss this. Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, um, just wanted to kind of clarify and go over sort of what I meant by this, um, in front of the council. Um, there are other cities like Seattle and Bellevue have done, um, you know, they call them stay healthy streets. And a stealth, stay healthy street is basically something that is closed to through motor vehicle traffic in order to make local streets safer so that people can have access to walk, bike or roll. Um, local access in the way that these other municipalities have implemented this is still completely allowed for individuals as well as deliveries, police, fire, garbage. Um, the only thing it takes away is cut through traffic, um, people whose destination isn't the neighborhood they're driving through. Um, you know, on the other hand, it gives people space to get outside on their feet, bicycle or wheelchair to be able to exercise, enjoy the outdoors with their family or have an opportunity for safe social contact with their neighbors. Um, and I, and I know I'm missing that. Um, they're generally marked simply with cones and signs that say street closed to through traffic. Um, uh, other municipalities have found them relatively simple to implement. Um, and that simplicity means they're also pretty flexible. Um, both Seattle and Bellevue have had streets that have been revised, um, after the fact, after feedback, um, from public safety as well as the community. Um, and, and, and those cities have said they, they were relatively quick and easy to resolve. Um, Seattle said that traffic on their stay healthy streets, um, after the first three weeks was down 91% compared to a 57% decrease in traffic overall in the city. Um, bicycling was up 299% and that's a significant decrease in overall commute trips because many people are working from home. Um, Seattle D O T in their report mentioned they've seen very little stationary gathering and that every single location they've applied this in, kids are using it regularly. Um, they, they've noted that they've seen people move the signs or cones, but neighbors quickly move them back. Um, because it turns out people really like having their neighborhoods be safer, quieter and, and having more space to get outside and enjoy themselves. Um, Bellevue's process was a little bit different than Seattle's. Um, theirs was completely staff led after people in the community had voiced the idea. Um, and they, they also implemented it as a pilot program. Um, they have a survey up online asking their community what they think and they noted that the total feedback overall was about 65% positive and 35% negative, but that almost all of the negative feedback happened before they implemented the streets. And, and that once people saw the changes that had been made, there was very little negative comment at all. Um, Bellevue is going to publish some of their findings later this week. Um, and because it's been so well received on Friday, they're adding two more streets to their pilot. Um, you know, people 10 to 20 miles away have really liked having their neighborhoods be safer and quieter and having more space to get outside. Um, and I think people in Bothell would really like all of those things as well. Um, so I, I would love if we could provide, um, direction to look at what it would look like to implement these in Bothell and, you know, using the other cities as, as a model perhaps, but knowing that we need to find a way to make this work in our city, um, in our specific context.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yeah, although I think it's a unique, uh, idea. I, I think it's a terrible time right now to try to implement it. Uh, I, I think closing residential streets, the city's going to have to look at the grids and they're going to have to look at a lot of things. And it's going to cost a lot of resources that we really don't have available to us at this point in time. I, I wouldn't mind seeing this after this whole thing is over and revamping it.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, I'm, I'm just sitting here thinking about the history that I know of Bothell and one neighborhood that didn't like cut through traffic and was able to get, uh, speed bumps put in. Um, but the surrounding neighbor, the other streets kind of went into a dither because now traffic that was not being allowed to cut through one neighborhood is heavily impacting another neighborhood. Um, uh, it, it, so I'm, I'm just trying to picture where in Bothell the, this would be a fit. I'm thinking, well, okay, neighborhoods that have dead ends that are really just there to serve mostly. And, and we have a few, we have quite a few of them here. The, the other problem though that goes through my head is that there has been discussion in the past in, and I know, of getting rid of zoning that has created, uh, COVID attacks and to create more of a grid so that traffic is not heavily burdened on the same streets that there's more of an even load of traffic. So I, I'm not sure if doing, if you're talking about something that's a trial and just a short term funding like the dog park that's gone around, that has rotated around the area, that's one thing. To make a permanent change, it's, it's going to take a big heavy lift and may, so, so I, so I have all those thoughts going through my head is, is that if you're talking about making something that's going to be permanent, it, it's going to take, it's going to take years for that to figure out what's going to work as they, the city planners decide how traffic's going to move through. Um, if you're talking about something small scale and different neighborhoods that's rotating around, it's probably not, is not that big of a deal because there's not that much traffic going on anyway. But that's my two bits.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Heard you. Okay. Do you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So one of the things that Bothell has that I think we have to remember is we have a lot of trails. We, you know, we have the Burke Gilman and many trails that go in between different places. So we're very, very fortunate for that. I, I, I think the staff time to do this is a great concern to me. Um, but I noticed that some streets where people really have to walk in the streets might be, um, that we can reduce the speed. So I walk on 88th Avenue, um, two miles every morning. This, this traffic is going by about 40 miles an hour. And if there's runners and walkers, some of us have to go in the street. So if we just have a lower speed limit, it would be helpful. So that's kind of my suggestion if we really want to pay attention to what people need. There might be other streets like that in Bothell where just a lower speed limit would be helpful for people who have to walk in the street. My comment.
Councilmember Doer.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would remind everyone that your, um, hearing from the communities, a lot of those comments were about streets, um, not just Main Street. I think there were at least, I don't know, 15 to 20 comments about streets. So, um, I think when we talk about being responsive to the community, we need to remember that. And, and I guess, uh, as a potential solution, I would, I would throw out there, perhaps it's not a matter of the city being proactive and, and saying, this would make a great street, but rather maybe allow for neighbors to say, hey, how about our street? Um, and that might be a way that it limits staff time and commitment. But, um, there were a lot of comments from the community that were asking for this. And so I, I guess I, um, I feel more that we should, we should look into this and find a way, maybe a limited way, but still find a way to implement this sort of thing. And to wait for next year to me doesn't make sense because this is, in other cities, has been a direct response to COVID and the need for social distancing and, um, places for people, um, to recreate. and places for people to recreate. So that's my two cents. And I, I guess, I will be in favor of this.
Councilmember McNeil.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, this, this is a tough one for me because I look at it as, you know, first, I thank Councilmember Thompson for bringing this up because I think it is important that we have safe places for families to go out and, and recreate. I agree with Councilmember McAuliffe, trails, you know, we have 400 acres of open space and places to go. But, but I think it's, it's important to, to open the conversation, have a dialogue around our streets and having safe places for, for us to move around. The reason why I say it's tough is because I live in a community within Boffel, neighborhood within Boffel, that has a, a, a main street that runs around in a loop that is tied to a main corridor. And I could only imagine if I put cones up or we put cones up at the beginning of our, our community here, our little neighborhood, what type of a current that would be within our, within our neighborhood, and how I would feel if I came up on a, a community or neighborhood like this and I saw a bunch of cones that says no to traffic. So I, I'm torn on this one, but I feel like there's some pros and cons to it. You know, and, and my, my mind is kind of all over the place, but I, I go back to the old saying, if we're going to do something like this, we have to study the impacts that it's going to have on our, on our streets. So, for instance, fire and, you know, public safety, how, you know, rolling up on cones, they're going to get out of their car and move the cones, the fire trucks and police cars. And who's, who's going to study, you know, like Councilmember Dewar brought up, you know, you know, having the neighborhoods be, you know, we want one here and we want one there, and then that gets chaotic within the city and what resources we're going to apply to. I, I think it's, it's a fabulous idea. I just think it's going to be expensive and it's going to take extensive research to figure it out. And right now, we're not only going through one pandemic, but we're going through another crisis where we have an extensive resources. We're out on the street on a regular basis. We just saw our, our Boffel For a Day in Lifetime sign tag. But we, there's a lot going on right now. We have to, we have to really figure out where we want to put our time and effort and energy into our community right now. And we just took a very big step for our businesses by some of the decisions we just made. I'm hoping that, you know, we can find the time and resources in the future to look at stuff like this because I, I think that is what makes Boffel great. But at the same time, I want to make sure that, you know, we are giving the city manager and the city staff the time they need to do to take care of the things that we currently have on our plate. And having the, the budget deficit that we currently have right now, the fact that we just laid people off, I, I think it's more important than ever to make sure that we, we listen to our city staff and our city manager, understand what resources we have available to us, what they're going through, and make sure that we don't overburden ourselves as a city, as a community, and make sure that, that we do things and look out for, so we don't get into a bigger crisis than we already are. Thank you.
All right. So Councilmember Thompson and I have talked about this a few different times, and usually we're not seeing eye to eye on it. I mean, I'm a, I'm a cyclist and I, I walk my dog frequently on the city streets and the roadway. And I live on a pretty busy street, but we have a sidewalk. So I see lots of people these days, quite a few more than previously before COVID and everything, using our sidewalks. But I think, you know, with some of these items that we've already brought up tonight with Main Street and the ordinance, that we're already shifting a lot of the staff's work onto these items that I think truly have some financial benefit to our cities and our residents. And I think this might be a better topic. I agree that this is, you know, maybe more of a council goal to add on to our goal setting in the future and start having this discussion. Because I, I think it is a longer term solution that's, that's necessary to change the paradigm in our city. I mean, we're still very much a car city up here, but I think the way you change that is to make those changes and not react to those changes. So for now, I'm not in support of this, but I, I think it's, it's something to keep discussing and put it on the, the future goal setting and make progress with it that way. Because I, I think it has a lot of merit and, you know, there's definitely a lot of public sentiment for this. So, but it looks like we have mixed, but I think everyone's gone around. So I, I just want to have a motion now. And what's that? I'm not sure. Did we have a majority? Because I thought it was, I thought it was pretty close and on what people were deciding. So I was, okay. I didn't, I didn't feel there was a, a majority on it. So I think it'd be best just to have a motion and, and then have a discussion on it. So Councilmember Thompson.
So before I say anything else, I need to make a motion?
Yeah, I think we've all had our round of, of discussion for this. But if you make a motion and it gets seconded, then there's, you know, chance for discussion.
All right. I move that we have staff look into this and what this would be so that we can have a substantive discussion after we have a little bit more context.
Councilmember Dewar.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Councilmember Thompson and a second from Councilmember Dewar to have the staff look into the healthy streets further. So discussion. Councilmember Thompson.
Um, I just wanted to say, I feel like we're having a discussion about whether or not we should do this. And what I would like to do is have our staff look at what would go into this. You know, I, I hear a lot of things thrown about around, this is going to take a lot of time, this is going to cost a lot of money. And, and the fact is, we just, we haven't seen that from our staff. And, and rather than try to say, is this a thing we should do? I think that this should be a thing we should continue to talk about so we can get some of those answers and, and make a decision in the future.
All right. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I, I hate vote against this motion, but I'm going to vote against it with the caveat that when we create, because it's just a heavily burdened summer. And I want a good diving into this with the caveat that this is one of the top things that we talk about when we create council goals. So that we can, so that we can do the subject right. I, I think right now, if we were to put it on staff's plate right now, it's just placing an undue burden. Give it a few months, but we're going to create our council goals and let's get it, and let's get it official and give it all the, all the concern and attention that do it. So it, my vote is going to be no, but it's a no saying yes later on.
Councilmember Agnew.
You know, I think it's an interesting subject, but I will not be supporting this motion. And, and I just feel this is definitely not the time to do it, look into it.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry that I will also be voting no. I really think we should, as I said before, I think about reducing the speed limits so people can be walking on the street and be safe at this time. But I, I feel this would take a lot of staff time. And with our furloughs and really laying off the staff, I, I can't support the work that this would take. So I will be a no.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I also will not be supporting it, but I did want to tell Councilmember Thompson that I think his intentions are, are wonderful. I think what he's trying to accomplish here is something we definitely should, should talk about in the future. But there's just so much going on right now and understanding what we're going through. I think the resources are, are better used to ensure that we can keep up with what we have on our plate. I do, I do support working intention.
All right. City Clerk.
When I state your name, please vote yea or nay. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Nay.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yea.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Nay.
Mayor Olson.
Nay.
Councilmember McNeil.
Nay.
Councilmember Dewar.
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yea.
Motion fails five to two.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I think that was three very challenging topics. I, I think we all have been looking forward to these opportunities to get back to having more robust meetings and being able to discuss these topics. So on to 20 dash 071, consideration of the King County Council's Economic Development Relief Funds for Phase Two reopening kits. Then it looks like we have Economic Development Manager, Jeanne Ash.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. It's a pleasure to see you all. And I thank you for hanging in there and your patience. This has been a long haul this evening. You've made some really important decisions, and I thank you for your leadership. I'm here this evening to ask you for your input with regards to the King County Council's Economic Development Relief Fund and to use these funds for the implementation of what I'm calling a Phase Two reopening kit. So on, at its May 12, 2020 meeting, King County Council approved a $60 million, $60 million funding package for continued response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The adopted budget includes a $3 million package of direct support for every single city in King County outside of the city of Seattle. King County acknowledges that the city knows, knows what is best for their communities and providing cities discretion to develop activities in response to COVID-19. City of Boffel's estimated allotment is $45,267. So as you all know, and as you've been discussing this evening, is that restaurants, bars, retail salons, and gyms have been the hardest hit by COVID-2019. While there's been a lot of federal support in the CARES Act that has provided some relief to those businesses who have been successful in securing grants and loans, they're still, we're still seeing a lot of businesses with reduced revenue. And in fact, the, the statistic for King or Seattle area restaurants is that they have seen a 67% decline in revenue. So cities throughout the region are supporting their businesses using either general funds or using CDBD CARES grant dollars to assist the small businesses. Everett is an example of a community that is using a $500,000 HUD CDBD grant for their Evercare's grant program. City of Boffel, being a community of less than 50,000 residents, we don't qualify to get direct allocation of CDBD grant funds. Additionally, as you know, Boffel, our general fund has been seriously depleted by the lack of self-tax revenue from our bars, restaurants, salons, and gyms. So an investment of $45,000 into our small businesses would have a meaningful impact. So the Phase Two reopening, as you all know, too, limits restaurants and caverns to 50% capacity. And businesses must adhere to increased health precautions and cleaning regimen. These requirements are putting additional stress on our businesses and their bottom line. It's requiring them to expend extra money. We evaluated a variety of ways to spend this grant money. And all of the options that we came up with were to ask businesses to extend additional funds, and then we would reimburse them. So what we're proposing to you today is that the city of Boffel use the funds to purchase reopening, Phase Two reopening kits, and then just distribute them to our restaurants, our bars, our gyms, and our salons. By, by purchasing and distributing these to restaurants, bars, and salons, this would eliminate the additional costs that businesses would have to spend in the reopening efforts. A reopening kit would include two wall-mounted hand sanitizer dispensers, two gallons of hand sanitizers, 40 reusable cloth masks, floor decals promoting social distancing for businesses, we are open posters, as well as a Boffel Strong window cream. Each Phase Two reopening kit has, kit has an approximate value of $310. And utilizing King County Council grants, the city could support approximately 150 businesses with these kits. This is a one-time expenditure utilizing King County grants. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them right now.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jeanne, I'm going to, I'm going to ask you this question. Did you get any input from businesses regarding what their needs are?
Yes. And candidly, their needs are cash. And they have, it depends on what sector you're talking to. Our bars and our restaurants need whatever help that we can provide them. And when I talk to them about utilizing our funds, they're the ones who actually recommended it. And in fact, what they told me was that we could purchase, we had more purchasing power than they did, and we could buy more supplies and make a bigger impact if we purchased it rather than having them purchase it.
I appreciate that. That's what I really was looking for. Very insightful. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Agnew.
I think it's a great idea. I think the businesses will really appreciate what you're doing. Nicely done, Jean.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Never have I wanted to draw a little, this is, this is, this is sad of them. It just looked like a great encouragement. I, I appreciate Councilmember McAuliffe asking for this. And this is something that I, because I, and I thought, what a great love from the city to them, saying, if anything, if anything, so thank you for, for your, for your, your, your way to this. It's, it's very, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Thompson.
I just wanted to reiterate that Councilmember McAuliffe asked some questions that I had about this. And I'm really glad that we went to our businesses and asked them what they needed.
Councilmember Dewar. Councilmember Doer. Nope. Hold on. There we go.
Okay, now go. Can I go?
Good times, yep.
Thank you for the update. I think it's fabulous that you reached out to businesses. And now that I heard your speech and that you actually asked businesses what you could do to help, I am fully in support of using CARES money to provide the same service for the other camps. So I think it's fabulous. I appreciate all the work that you've been doing supporting businesses. I'm going to vote yea.
Thank you.
See, Councilmember McNeil?
Thank you, Mayor. I also wanted to echo the comments and thank you for your hard work and effort on connecting us with our businesses, both in King County and Snohomish County. Again, it's imperative that we ensure that all of our businesses across some entire communities feel that we're looking out for them, and I appreciate you making sure that that actually is the message being out to them.
Councilmember McAuliffe, I just want to keep it to one round on this. But Jeanne, I think you're doing great work. I think just day after day, we just keep realizing how important Economic Development Manager is to our city and how much our businesses appreciate you. And seeing your interaction at the Chamber of Commerce meetings is great. And so, yeah, I think, I think this idea is great. You know, the $45,000 isn't a lot, but I think these kind of smaller bite-sized can go to, you know, over 100 different businesses and really make an impact far beyond those dollar amounts. So kudos.
Thank you.
So I think we're just looking for a direction on this. I don't think we were looking for, and by far, we're having strong support here. So, I mean, everyone's gushing love. So, so, yeah.
No.
Thank you very much. All right, so that takes us through the bulk of our agenda. We have a council conversation. Our first one seems like forever. So is there some topics, some people interested in conversing? It's going to be a little more challenging on virtual meetings. So Deputy Mayor Zorins, we can always count on you. Oh, no.
Stop. So just really, really quick, you know, I'm a big AWC fan, and we're missing the conference this spring. But thankfully, it's free, and there, and most of the workshops are just on demand. But there's one that's a general session on that Wednesday, the 24th. So if you're looking for a diversion before the budget conversation, sign up. It's really, really easy. A general session from 12:30 to 2:00, and it is COVID-19, what every elected official needs to know. So just wanted to let you know that that was out there for you, AWC folks.
Thanks, Jeanne. That was a nice plug for AWC. All right, anyone else? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to just try to hold it together here as soon as I can. But the, I wanted to say thank you to our chief again for all the things that he said in his letter. As a person of color, what he said means a lot. And more now than ever, I feel welcome within this community, standing out on the street corner and talking to some of my neighbors whom, which I've never met before, but have been part of this community for better part of 20 years, 15 years, recent graduates. And hearing from them and seeing them out there, holding the signs that they were holding, makes you feel loved and cared about. And, you know, I've gone through a lot growing up in this area. But as a, as a father, to be able to raise my kids here and feel that my kids will have a better opportunity than I had means that with all the negativity that's going on right now in our country, there is some positivity. And a lot of you know that I always try to preach the positive side of things. I always try to find the good in things, and that's because when you do that, it will happen. And so my kids held signs up on the street corner in Boffel, and I was able to take a picture of them holding that sign, and it says, "No More Violence, More Peace." And more than ever in this world, we need a lot more of the peace side of things. So to all my friends that have reached out to myself and to my family, thank you. It means a lot, and we have a lot of work to do, but we do that work together, and we shall overcome anything, any obstacle that gets in our way. So thank you for giving me the time to say that. I just, I just really wanted the community to know how much I appreciate them from being the first black elected council member in the city of Boffel. It shows how far we've come, so thank you.
Thank you, James, for sharing that. Deputy Mayor Zorins?
I just have to leap in because it's a conversation. And, James, I, you know, you can have your mentions on me, but I stand shoulder to shoulder with you, and I think Andrew, our shortest member on council, and she also probably would stand shoulder to shoulder with you. These times are real and intense, and it's, it's personal. It's always been personal since I was a child because I've always had members, family members, and friends who were, who were and are of color. And I have grandchildren who are of color. And, and I have family members who are officers, and they're on the other side of trying to fight for, I think our police chief has you acknowledged his wonderful handling of this. He used the word that our staff, that our police are burdened with a duty and a sense of justice and integrity. And we got you back, Jeanne. And just, you know, take one day at a time, which is, I think, something that you espouse and you encourage us to do, is one day at a time with a good attitude. So thank you for being that model.
Thank you. And I will tell you it's for the future, so thank you, Jeanne.
Councilmember Doer.
I don't know if I can say it better than Councilmember Zorins, but I, it was a rough weekend for me, so I can only imagine what the weekend was like for you. And I want you to know that you were on my mind and at my heart. And I, I'm tired of feeling bad about it, about these things, and I'm, I'm ready to take action. And I want you to know that I have...
No, it looks like... Yeah, Councilmember Doer, you, for us, at least in the chambers we're cutting out, but it looks like, you know, from other people nodding, that hopefully everyone else heard your sentiment. So, oh, we're having some technical glitches. We're having some technical issues here.
I'm glad it's not just me.
All right, we're, it looks like we're back, so I think we should try and wrap it up. Councilmember McAuliffe, if you have some final words? And you're on mute. Up there.
Hello, are you hearing me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Okay, okay, thank you. So I just want to say that it's really important that we celebrate who we are, our cultures, our color. And thank you, James, for speaking out, but I value you and all that your family brings to us, but also I value every culture. So I think the city of Boffel has taken a step in that direction to recognize diversity, and I appreciate that. So just want to end it with that.
James, we've had lots of great things spoken. I really appreciate you finding the strength to speak, you know, sharing your stories and your, what you were speaking with the chief about. I think these challenging times really shine a light on the grit and the, just the soul of the city and the staff. So I think it just always makes me more and more proud of the community that we are and that we continue to evolve into. And just these peaceful protests show us that, you know, that we can, you know, that we do have a heart and, you know, we don't have, thankfully, the strife that other cities are encountering during these challenging times. So I'm just very thankful and very proud at the same time.
Thank you, Mayor. A lot.
All right, looks like we are closing up, running out of discussion. Councilmember Thompson?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo everything that's been said. And Councilmember Neil, I'm, I can understand what it is that you have to go through, and I'm sorry that you have to. But thank you for your service to the city. And may one day things be better.
Thank you, Mason. And I will always remember our conversations we had. And I hope today, more than ever, you understand what that conversation meant to me when we had it.
Councilmember Doer.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All right, there we have a motion and a second. I think we all have a majority, so we won't put the city clerk through the vote on this. So great seeing everyone, everyone. I think it was great having a productive meeting again. So we're finally getting some more normalcy. Thanks, and have a great week.